For July 20th, 2022. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge the reasons, please do.
Our Father.
To our heaven. Thou will be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven.
And give this day our daily bread.
And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. And he is not temptation, but deliverers from evil.
Thy name is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. The consent agenda has been approved unanimously. First item we have on the agenda today is a proclamation to recognize the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month. Mr. Steve Miller is here. I'm glad to have you here, Steve. And Councilman Bill McCain will be presenting the proclamation.
It's nice to have Steve here with us. The, you know, we've all commented many times here at meetings about the great job that our Parks and Recreation folks do. And, you know, people in the county appreciate it. You know, this is National Parks and Recreation Month. And in honor of that, we have a proclamation. And, you know, I'm privileged to be the one to do this on the council rep on the Parks and Rec Commission. And so it's always a pleasure to be able to spend time with all the Parks and Rec folks and see all the good work they're doing every day. So I'll read this proclamation and present it to you. The proclamation reads, "National Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining quality of life, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs provide recreational services to improve the health of citizens and build healthy communities, that aid in the prevention of chronic disease; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased tourism, the attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for citizens to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month and recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby designate the month of July 2022 as National Parks and Recreation Month in Wycomico County." Steve?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. McCain, for your comments. And I want to thank all the members of the council for the proclamation, but also for your support of recreation and parks throughout the year. I'm awfully proud of what we do and who we are and the value that we bring to the community. And I'm especially proud of the people that I represent. And many of you know those folks, but we've got a lot of very hardworking, very dedicated people who care a lot. And when that happens, you can do some special things. And many of the staff members are here. Many of them are out in 100-degree heat, making it happen for events. And that's the kind of stuff that our people do every day. So I'm proud of those folks and want to thank the council and the executive for the proclamation. Thank you.
If you could stand in front of the podium for a picture.
Next item on the agenda, we have a certificate of appreciation, a special certificate of appreciation to Mr. Bill Dow for his years of service as owner and CEO of USSA Eastern Incorporated. And Director Steve Miller is our presenter today.
Mr. Dow. So speaking of doing special things, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dow. Bill is the owner and the executive director of USSA. I'm just going to make a couple very quick comments before reading the certificate. Bill recently announced his intent to retire at the end of the year. And he, along with his staff, have brought the USSA World Series to our region for the last 16 years. And so it's with sadness that we see him go, but we wanted to recognize today, of course, the council and the county executive, just how much he's done for the county over the years and for the entire region. And so I'm honored to be able to read this proclamation because, again, of how much he's meant to the community, but also to us as individuals. The relationship has just been what has propelled this for the year. So it's my privilege to read this certificate of recognition and appreciation to Mr. Bill Dow. On behalf of the citizens of Wycomico County, Maryland, we would like to congratulate Mr. Bill Dow on his upcoming retirement and express our sincere appreciation for his selection of Wycomico County as host of his largest event, the USSA Eastern National Championships for the past 15 years. What started as a 58-team tournament in 2007 has grown into a national event, drawing nearly 400 girls softball teams to the shore each summer, equating to over 12,000 players, families, friends, and event staff. The lower shore in Wycomico County have benefited by an estimated $185.3 million of visitor spending as a result of these events. By choosing Wycomico County to host the USSA Eastern National Championships, Mr. Dow has also provided the county the opportunity to demonstrate its ability to host large-scale tournaments in many other sports, helping establish Wycomico as a recognized leader in the sports marketing industry. Wycomico County owes Bill Dow a huge debt of gratitude for choosing it some 15 years ago, and we thank him for his many years of service. Signed this 20th day of July by the county council and the Acting County Executive. Mr. Dow.
Well, thank you, Steve. Thank you, council. It doesn't seem like it was 16 years, you know? There's, if you look back, I mean, John and Larry and, of course, Bill and Matt Kramer were sitting over there. And it's been, it's been a fun ride. It really has. It's been, and the one thing I don't want anyone to mistake is that this isn't just a three-week event. It's, it takes years of, I mean, a full year of planning. Immediately when this event is over, we get with Steve's staff and we start planning the whole thing for the following year. So it's, it's been a, as much of a, an impact that it's had on the county and the region, it's had an even greater impact on myself and my staff. So for that, we thank you all. Thank you.
Dow, thank you, Steve, Mr. Miller. Mr. Mitchell, good morning.
Good morning. This is a second reading, public hearing on legislative bill 2022-08, which is an act authorized empower Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the full faith and credit of the county on aggregate principal amount not to exceed $23,708,386 and evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time. One more series of general obligation bonds for the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by the county to finance, refinance, or reimburse the costs of certain projects for general services for community college, Board of Education, Public Works, and the airport, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repair, and furnishing equipment, equipment to land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto, as described further in the full bill. This will allow also the issuance of refunding bonds and general obligation bond anticipation notes.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on legislative bill 2022-08. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this bill, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern. It's a public hearing on legislative bill number 2022-08. Entertaining a motion from council to approve legislative bill 2022-08.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? So, did you, Henry comments?
Good morning. Pamela Lynn, Finance Director. Just that, we're in, as we've stated previously, we're in the process of starting the bond issuance for fiscal '23. The projects were approved in the CIP as well as the budget. And this legislation gives us the authority to borrow up to the dollar amount listed. If, as we get closer to the bond sale date, we determine that there are other sources of funding available to us, we can always reduce that amount. But if we don't pass the total amount, we wouldn't have the ability to borrow this total amount.
Questions from council? I guess the question you're probably getting more often than not is how comfortable are we feeling with the borrowing and the increases in interest rates escalating as quickly as they are with our, with our prior planning?
So based on the amount that we put in the budget, we feel that we are comfortable with the number. We anticipated when we created the budget that interest rates were going to go up. And so we created our budget with a higher interest rate to hopefully, hopefully we can get better than what we anticipated, but we, we did anticipate that in the budget.
Due to the fact that there is a chance interest rates are going to go up, is there any rebonding or refund, refinancing available on any of our prior bonds that we've done?
We're still looking at that with our financial plant company. Davenport will know that closer to the timeframe. So what they'll do is, is they'll look at the ones that are eligible, and we will put those out for bids. And if, and if they don't come in at a good rate, we don't have to refinance.
Thank you. Questions? All those in favor of legislative bill 2022-08, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Legislative bill 2022-08 passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Ms. Hurley.
Morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda is resolution number 82-2022. This is authorizing J.G. Parks and Sun, Inc. as a sole source vendor to provide parts for Western Star trucks to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '23. You'll notice that this resolution and the next three resolutions require a supermajority vote, so that means five council members will need to vote in favor of it in order for it to pass. And we do have our deputy director here from Public Works, Mark Whitelock, and our purchasing agent, Nick Rice.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 82-2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do.
Joe? Okay. My gentleman, if you could state your name and titles.
Morning. Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent.
Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works.
So you know, I always have questions about this sole sourcing. And I noticed this is just for one type of truck. Your other bids, your other sole source legislation you have on today is for OEM parts to buy from OEM, which means original equipment manufacturers. And I noticed, I know Western Star trucks, you know, they're like a lot of the other trucks. They have the same kind of engines that other trucks and all have. I mean, is this like you're going to be buying oil filters, air filters, but you've got to buy those from the same company? I don't want to mention the company, but, or can you still buy those other parts from other companies for service-related items?
So no, this would be just cab and chassis parts. All of our brake work, we, we price everything out. Every time we do a brake job, so we'll call around, we'll get our cheapest prices. Filter bids are put out every year. They cover it all. This is just pure cab and chassis parts.
Okay. All right. That's what I want to know. I'm good. The favor of resolution 82-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is resolution number 83-2022, authorizing Vermeer Mid-Atlantic LLC as a sole source vendor to provide OEM parts for the Wildcat Tramel and HG 8000 TX Grinder to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '23.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution number 83-2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Joe?
No, I'm good. Good.
Anybody? All those in favor of resolution 83-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 84-2022, authorizing WHO Manufacturing Company as a sole source vendor to provide OEM parts for the WHO tub grinder to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '23.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution number 84-2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
What's the difference, I guess, between this resolution and the last? What's the detail there? Just curious.
Between the two machines? So the Vermeer grinder, basically, it'll take your brush and your logs and those types of things. We keep the WHO grinder because it will take a full stump without any manipulation. The Vermeer only takes something a certain size, where this will take the big, big stuff. That's the difference.
Other questions? And we're on 84, right?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of resolution number 84-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is resolution number 85-2022. This is authorizing Carter Machinery Company, Inc. as a sole source vendor to provide parts for OEM Caterpillar equipment to be utilized by the Wycomico County Solid Waste Department during fiscal year '23.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution number 85-2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of, did you have questions? Yes.
Yeah. So this, just to record this, is the, so Carter parts, I guess there, there's no other, anyone else, I guess, closer? I was looking up online if there's anything. I guess they're the only ones that service those in our region that service those.
So those come in, yes.
The cat.
So Carter is mid-Atlantic. And so it's, you know, it's the mid-Atlantic region. And basically, only Caterpillar makes Caterpillar parts. And if we were trying to do something or go off of that, then we would start interfering with our warranties and, and other things that go along with these machines.
I'll also just say, of course, add on to this. I've just confirmed and heard that Mr. Rice is going to be moving on. And he's been a great asset to the county for a period of times. It'll be gone in the next few weeks. So this is our last opportunity to say thank you for your service, Mr. Rice, all that you do.
I appreciate it. And thank you guys for the opportunity you gave me six years ago to be the purchasing agent for Wycomico. So very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Actually, I'll echo that, you know? And I know those years you've been here, you've been diligent about improving your credentials and, you know, it's unfortunate as a loss for Wycomico to gain for somebody else. But, you know, that's good for you and, you know, wish you the best. And, you know, you've served the county very, very well.
Thanks. Very much appreciated.
I would say the same thing, Nick. Really been a pleasure working with you. I was shocked to see that you brought four sole-souls vendors before us.
Well, Mark reminded me, he was the first. I came up here for my first one, so he's my last one as well.
What's, what's your timeline? When's your last?
August 3rd, two weeks from today. Yep.
Congratulations as well. It's been a pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm forgetting now, but we haven't voted yet. All those in favor of resolution 85-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thanks.
Thanks again.
You take care. Thank you, Mark.
The next item for business is resolution number 86-2022. This is authorizing the Acting County Executive to accept a grant from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, Neighborhood Revitalization, in the amount of 2.5 million for the demolition and revitalization of property located at 510 West Road, Salisbury, Maryland. This is the former Campbell Soup Factory. And we do have Mr. Jesse Drew here, our Community Development Planner, and Mr. Brett Davis, owner of Davis Strategic Development.
Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution number 86-2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? If you could all come forward, we appreciate it. Mr. Carter, you coming up here at all? Standing right there? Make sure you all have a mic. And if you could, state your names, your titles, your positions for the public.
Lori Carter, Director for Planning.
Brett Davis, owner of Davis Strategic Development.
Jesse Drew, Community Development Planner.
Yeah, I have a question. First, thank you all for stepping up to the plate to do something with that property. I'm just wondering if it's for the entire property?
Uh, no. Well, so to clarify, would it, would it be best if I give you a little background? Just so that, so the entire factory is 300,000 square feet. To give you perspective, we just can't even come up with a number to demolish the whole thing because of, it, there's just so many intricacies to it. So the plan for this is essentially a stage one, which is to remove the wall that abuts West Road and is very likely to collapse within the next 15 to 20 years and is total blight. So we would remove that wall. There's about 40,000 to 60,000 square feet of space in the factory. Right behind that wall, there is a terrarium, if I was to describe it any way. There is no roof. There is a tree that is over 20 feet tall and is at least 25 years old. That describes to you part of the factory. We do have a letter of intent agreed upon to take a portion of the factory, and we are in negotiations to hopefully lease out a very large section of the factory. All these would be new jobs to the area. So the long-term plan for the project is total removal of the factory, because candidly, it's just not going to stand there for another 40 years. But what we would like to do is to stabilize the asset, produce income, and then be able to go for the much larger project. So we're going to remove the dangerous sections of the building currently. There is a vast amount of roof space that could use some help. And this 2.5 is candidly a drop in the bucket, but it is a huge drop in the bucket in the sense that we can get the worst parts of the factory removed. And part of this would also go towards a new facade. Nothing crazy, because again, the facade would not be there for 40 years. But this would help us to remove dangerous sections, create some additional parking, stabilize the roof. And then also part of this would be to plan what the community sees as the long-term vision in speaking with the community and the state of Maryland and some of the, you know, again, I'm not speaking for everyone, but one of the thoughts in the long term could be a multi-family mixed-use conversion with some community assets. I could easily see this being six or seven-story mixed-use housing. It's just a massive site. It's 16 acres, and we just don't get that very often with such close proximity to all, you know, it has water and sewer available next to it, but currently it's on well and septic. It has 11 different wells to tell you how large this building is and to tell you that, I mean, you can imagine we have to abandon several of those, and it'll be quite a remediation process. But this is to stabilize and then to plan the future of this project. But we are committed to the long-term success. This is not a fix and flip for us. This will be something that we would like to develop into a much larger project in the long run. But again, bring jobs, use the factory as it exists, and try and stabilize about 200,000 square feet that's currently vacant.
Anything is an improvement, so thank you.
Is, is there any environmental issues with the ground there that anyone found?
So we've done a phase two environmental, and we found nothing but minor oil runoff from a truck. That being said, this is a 65-year-old factory, so I am 100% certain they didn't find everything realistically. Like there, we put a number of $250,000 towards remediation within this budget that would not clear out much asbestos. And there has not been anything tested that has asbestos. But the timing of the factory means that there's a very decent likelihood that somewhere in that factory asbestos was utilized. We have not located it, but it's 300,000 square feet, and there are sections where, that are caved in. So I would say that the, the realistic nature of the environmental remediation is an open-ended ticket, and it could be anywhere from 250,000 to 5 to 10 million realistically to clear the site perfectly. But again, that's a, this is a 20-year vision, and this is, this first phase will make sure that there's no glaring issues of environmental concern.
Mostly the equipment out of that building's been stripped out, haven't they, over the years?
Inside, on the, one of the biggest concerns we have is the roof. There are metal machinery on that roof that are the size of school buses, and there's probably 15 of those. So there was so much cooling system, there were so many cooling systems utilized in there. I mean, I'm going to go ahead and estimate 50,000 square feet of refrigerated space, which is, if, you know, like refrigerated space is very, very difficult to maintain. So like there, there is a, still an abundance of machinery and equipment, specifically on the roof, which is one of the main focuses of this, is to remove that stuff and then stabilize the roof. I would estimate we have 500 roof leaks.
At one time?
Ballparking.
At one time, that factory had the largest ice-making capacity of anywhere on the East Coast.
Wow.
I was told.
Those units up on the roof refrigerated, they had to fly them up there with a helicopter to put them up there.
I don't doubt it. Because you couldn't even get a crane into the middle.
No, it was a helicopter. They had to put them in the parking lot, and the helicopter had to fly those units and put them up on top of the building.
That's awesome. We're hopeful that the only advantage is that with the scrapyard being the adjacent property, we think we can literally remove a section of metal and then convince someone to just drive it 75 yards. So that is one of the, the goals of this, so.
Hey, I'd rather give you credit for your willingness to tackle a project of that magnitude, but at the same time, you know, revitalization of, you know, facilities like that that have long passed their economic life is, you know, always important to all communities. So your willingness to tackle it from both those fronts is, you know, very, very noteworthy.
Thank you.
You represent a for-profit company.
Yes, absolutely.
Could you do this without the use of public taxpayer dollars? Could this, could anyone do this?
No, realistically. And I do want to be upfront, I'm going to have to come back to you in future years once we have stabilized the asset. One of our goals will be, there will need, there will have to be state funding. None of this makes sense.
I worked on a project years ago with Simba Development in Easton, and we just had a hint of, after our phase two, had a hint of chemicals in there. 69 dump truck trucks loads, full of soil to be able to pull out and put in. These are just massive projects. And until we invest in these kinds of, until we have government and for-profit in a community working together to try to, otherwise, these will just sit there for hundreds of years. So I really appreciate that you're actually going, going after these great projects. So thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
I like that. I like, thank you for stepping up, because I ride by that building almost every day, and I see that wall, and it's just a matter of time. You can see the bricks, each individual bricks that's going to come down at any time. I'd like to say that I've talked to delegate Sri Samper Hughes, which is part of this district, and she's 100% behind that project. And I think she sent a letter of endorsement for your money.
Yes, we did receive a slew of letters. The county team has been amazing.
Well, thank you for stepping up.
I just have a question for you. So what are the, you know, whenever you accept grant funding, there's always strings attached. So what is the, what does this need to be to fulfill the grant obligation? Does it have to be affordable housing? Does it need to bring X amount of jobs? Does it need to?
So the nice part, this is a rather open-ended grant, and so it is actually allowed to go towards a wide variety of things. It's actually, technically, you all, in the future, if, for instance, we needed another parcel, we could even apply for that to acquire, which eventually we will need, you know, without telling my plan too much, like we will need to acquire neighboring properties in the long run. So this can be used for acquisition, demolition, technically, new construction, but I didn't feel like that was reasonable for us to ask you to reimburse us for. And then And then most specifically is environmental and blight removal. So, I think it... When I talked to the people at the state when asking how to, you know, how to do this, it seemed like this checked every box they could really hope for.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Campbell Sue always piques everyone's interest in the community, everybody who you know. What would you say if people were to ask, like, a two-year window? Like, what are they to expect, you know, next year or in two years? I wouldn't go any further than two just yet, but if you would like to, that'd be fine.
Sure. So, candidly, stabilization would occur over the next two years, which means removal of the blight, which is about sixty thousand square feet, some type of facade being put on the property, and then leasing out of the remainder. So, I would expect that the two-point-five million would be spent over an eighteen-month window. You'll see our teams out there doing tons of stuff over that on that site, basically indefinitely. But this stabilization is probably a five-to-ten-year realistically, only because if we're talking about a total redevelopment, we're looking at, you know, we could have three-hundred to five-hundred units on that site. It's large enough, so. And that... We even put in a site for a gymnasium for the community. So, we would think five to ten years for an actual total redevelopment, but over the next two to three years, I expect everything on my wish list to be completed, and we would have ideally about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand square feet fully leased out and operational. And we are... We actually have... If the facility was standing perfectly with the... Excluding the sections that already collapsed, we would actually already have a lease for the entire factory. And I would have, I mean, I don't know how many jobs that is, and I don't want to BS that number, but I mean, it'd be two-hundred-thousand square feet of additional space. There are currently three companies operating out of that facility, and that's a total of about seventy, maybe sixty-five thousand square feet. And to give you perspective, that's twenty percent occupied, so.
It's not going to be a total one-hundred percent demolition?
Correct.
But there will be partial demolition, you think?
Yes, we're going to remove about sixty thousand square feet of the factory. So, this is not the majority of the factory. Most of it is salvageable. I mean, there are some sections that are in very good condition for a sixty-year-old factory, as much as a sixty-year-old factory can be in good shape.
All those in favor of resolution eighty-six dash two thousand twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next for your consideration is resolution number eighty-seven dash twenty-two. This is authorizing the relinquishment of all right, title, and interests to a perpetual easement to the East Side Memorial Post Number twenty-nine ninety-six, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, Inc. And we have our county attorney, Mr. Paul Wilber, here.
Good morning.
Entertained motion from council to approve resolution number eighty-seven dash two thousand twenty-two.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Wilber, good morning.
Good morning. Would you like me to summarize this?
As you would.
Right. So, back in nineteen ninety-two, the Waukesha County conveyed this property, which I think you all have in your briefing book. It's a property, there's a plat on here of four-point-seven acres, which contained a building, which was the VFW Gathering Center, which I believe has a kitchen and a meeting room in it, and a playground in the back portion of the property. So, that was conveyed in ninety-two, and the county reserved a perpetual easement over the playground and the ball field, which I think for some period of time, the county did maintain that. I don't think it's been in use in recent years. And now, the VFW, I believe, is going to forfeit their charter and close up.
Yeah. Can I expand on that a little bit, which you said?
Mr. Holloway.
It was an elementary school at one time. And as in any property that the schools own, when they quit using them, it gets reverted back to the county. So, the county ended up owning that school, and the VFW purchased it from the county and has operated it since nineteen ninety-two. And one of the agreements was if the VFW bought it, that they would allow for enough room for a playground and a ball field. And that's always been there. The county was really, I think, supposed to maintain those two pieces, but they... There wasn't any interest in it. So, the VFW, like a lot of other organizations, has fallen on kind of hard times, I think, and not enough membership and participation. And they have decided in the near future to give up the charter and sell the property, which they did buy to begin with. I mean, it wasn't given to them, so.
Right.
Yeah, anyway.
It's my understanding they have a purchaser. The purchaser does not want the perpetual easement on the property. So, the request has been made by the VFW to the county to remove that perpetual easement so they can sell the property. And the letter that I received from the VFW indicated they were going to donate the proceeds of the sale to various charities. So, that's what I know about this process.
Most likely, from what I've been told, is the proceeds from the sale go to some of the fire departments and other entities around the county, so.
Other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of resolution eighty-seven dash two thousand twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Attention, good morning.
Good morning. I call your attention to resolution eighty-eight, twenty-two, adopting the annual audit plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three.
And motion from council to approve resolution eighty-eight dash two thousand twenty-two.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Every year, I bring an annual audit plan before council for approval per IIA guidelines. The annual audit plan is crafted from projects that weren't completed the year before, the risk assessment, you know, current ones, past ones, communication with our external auditors, as well as just general data that I gather from interactions with departments throughout the year. This year, the risk assessment was performed using an online survey versus in the years past, we've sent out an eight-page packet to maybe thirty or forty employees. You get back ten to twenty. This year, IT helped me with getting the list of all employees' emails. So, I sent that out, and I actually got a hundred and fifty responses. So, that gave me a lot more information to work with to craft the audit plan. In this current year, I completed the purchase card audit and two follow-ups that weren't scheduled, the fuel audit with one follow-up, the vendor audit, bid process audit, employee's deduction audit, the budget review as always, as well as a salary study special project. I am currently finishing the grants audit and the miscellaneous expenditures audit. I will be carrying forward the bank reconciliation audit and the audit manual update. I am dropping the capital asset audit and revenue reconciliation. Those were no longer findings on our external audit, so it seems that they've been taken care of. And I've, given the risk assessment, I've found more pressing projects. I did identify thirteen projects, hope to complete them all. I typically overbook myself, so I'm always busy. But, um... So, but during this year, I completed about ten projects, but they were very fruitful in the results. Few key examples are the e-sign-offs for purchasing cards went from around fifty percent compliance to ninety-nine percent during the fiscal year because of things that management has done based on our audit findings. Management is actively working on an open checkbook module, which was not used for the past couple of years. I was invited to collaborate on that as far as working with Munis and seeing what they've come up with. That's still in the works. Management also moved the reconciliation process for benefits from HR to finance, per the audit recommendation. I feel like as auditor, I've really had a tenet of nurturing a nonjudgmental, open-door policy. And in this past year, I've worked on about, I don't know how many projects, but through five different departments have just come to me discreetly to ask for guidance on different things. I don't make a big deal about that. I think that's how I keep them coming to me. Just before the meeting, I had a department had come to me and say, "Hey, I'm going to need you to come out soon to look at something we have going on. There's changes in my department. I want to get your input." That really hasn't happened a whole lot in the past. So, given that it's happening, that really it makes internal audit a value-added service to the county, that they're comfortable enough to come and say, "Hey, can you take a proactive approach and look at this?" And know that they might be opening a can of worms, but most of the time, it's not. For this audit plan, the two audits that I will be starting on first will be the inmate welfare account audit and compensatory time audits. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we still have the... We still have the employee hotline, right?
We do. I'm updating that next.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm just curious if they... Do we have... Is there a brochure they get when they're hired on the employee hotline? Or do we have signs posted in workplaces?
Yep, every...
To notify them of the hotline?
Yep. Every department has flyers that were sent out along with, like, little cards. And I've seen those around departments when I visit. We have it posted on our website. We have it posted on people's pay stubs as well.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Yes, Josh.
I've noted the inmate welfare audit. Can you tell us more details on that?
Sure. So, the inmate welfare account, it's a fund that is where fiduciary of, that it's funded by different things, activities from the inmates, vending machines, things like that, that they put money into, and then they get some sort of kickback on that. Those funds are then used... Are supposed to be used for purchases and services that benefit the inmates, because it's not county funds. It's more or less a private fund. So, this audit is going to be going through those purchases, those transactions, and making sure that they are actually things to benefit the inmates and that we are managing the funds in the way we're supposed to.
And I guess my question, looking at that, was how much of that do we fund? Or I'm assuming it was...
We don't fund any of it.
Anything of it, okay. That's cool. Thank you.
I guess for the public, Levin, if you could maybe share with them what you think are the four highest priorities in the county? I mean, everyone is very worried about transparency, I'm sure, that we're doing our job. And I think it would be good to share with the public an overview of just what you see as the four or the five highest priorities that you have that you'll be working on behalf of the county.
Sure. So, information technology is really a hot topic right now. So, that is something my audit committee and I have talked about extensively. So, that's definitely on my audit plan. I'm planning for that for the second half of the year. I'm going to have to do some continuing education to get myself up to speed to do an actual thorough audit on it. That audit also kind of left open in it. That probably will be changing the verbiage and things in the audit outline will be changing based on what I learn. Purchase cards and fuel, as far as employees go, that's more or less a hot topic that they talk about, that, you know, especially with the new wax cards, even though I've audited that program and I've found that it is working the way it's supposed to. A lot of people are still just, because it's so decentralized, I think it makes them uncomfortable. Sorry. And then one audit, well, this is not an audit, but I will say, based upon the risk assessment, and I don't know how I would audit this, so I'm not... A lot of people see turnover as a huge risk, and one of the questions in the risk assessment is, you know, how has turnover been in the last two years in your department? It was medium to high, and what do you expect turnover to be in the next two years? And that was rated high. I'm not sure what an audit would do for that, but it's just information about the general thought process of employees, so.
Other questions?
I mean, that could certainly be shared with HR.
Just say, too, I say this every year, but it's, I don't know if the broader public understands how important your position is, Levin, and, you know, just to be able to have an extra check and to make sure that the government is running in a very efficient way and that we are all, you know, being accountable. I mean, that's really fantastic. So, I applaud you again. Great work every year to try to put this together and to think through, together with council, with the executive branch and others, to think through, how can you be most effective? And so, people don't realize how important this is, but thank you for all of that.
I appreciate that. And I will say, I appreciate as well, management and over the past couple of years, just their willingness to take the audit findings and actually make meaningful changes. It really does make the county run better now and protects taxpayer dollars.
Going back to your comment about information technology, infrastructure audit, I'm sure with, particularly when COVID happened, and then we had more people remote, a whole lot of questions, whether it's county government or a private business, whatever, all of a sudden, security questions around software and access points became much more prevalent, and a lot of that still carries forward to this day. So, I can certainly see where that would be high on the list of things to audit.
It is. I'm logged into the county server right now, and I'm wireless, you know, through their VPN. So, it is very important.
Questions? All those in favor of resolution eighty-eight dash two thousand twenty-two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
All right. And next on the agenda is just a quick hotline update, very broad overview. Waukesha County uses Lighthouse Services to provide our hotline. This one has a web and a phone option for people to call in with their concerns. In the past, we have three broad categories that we accept calls for, which is human resources-related, not to the department, but more, you know, personnel-related, fraud, compliance, and ethics. This year, we received five complaints, and they were all under the HR category or personnel category. Those were split between six... Three of them were through the web portal, and two were through the phone. So, that's kind of what I've seen with this new program. Our old program, you could only call in, and I think that made people more hesitant. We were getting usually one to three complaints a year. But with the web option, I think people are a little bit more willing to go online and fill out a form, not having to call and talk to someone. Management has been very supportive of the hotline between allowing us to have human resources calls. We weren't able to with the last administration and our last hotline provider, as well as management has, when they did a purchasing training between purchasing department and finance department, they integrate a hotline in that to promote it.
Levin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. And that concludes public comments. Council comments? Joe?
As people watching this will see, that we're a day late on the council meeting because yesterday was an election day, primary election. I just want to thank all the folks that came out and voted. It was an interesting day, a lot of enthusiasm. So, it'll be a little while before any of the final vote tallies are done, and I'm sure a lot of people will be waiting to see what happens there. So, thanks anyway for coming out and voting.
That's kind of nice. Josh?
I'll piggyback on that and say, it was also great to see that there's a lot of new candidates running for the very first time, and that's always good for democracy. Also, to note, we've, you know, we've got a good team here, but well, you know, the majority of this council will no longer be here, and all of this going in different ways and different... You know, some of us moving on in different ways. But I just wanted to thank all the people sitting at this table for their great service. And then, I guess, as we figure on, hopefully, we'll help plan the individuals who will be sitting in these seats going forward to make sure that they're ready to go, you know, come December. So, thanks to all the candidates who ran and all the people who came out and voted.
Any other comments?
Entertaining motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session.
It's a move.
Second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. The first open work session is the changes to the animal, proposed changes to the animal control regulations. I don't see, is she, is Ms. Kim Knock is here? Good. Are you gonna be helping her?
I can't.
Good, good, good.
Do you mind if I bring up animal?
Anybody need, anybody need? Yes, anybody need? Yes, thank you. Hey, how are you? We appreciate you taking the initiative. I know you've been trying to get on the agenda for a while.
It's okay.
And some time ago, when the council last did a major upgrade to the regulations, and I'm looking for a new perspective on this, to see what, what you feel needs to be changed and how we need to do it to make things run easier and keep it all legal, right?
Correct.
Good. So, if you could each state your name and your associations for the public, we'd appreciate it.
Kimberly Knock, Executive Director of the Humane Society, Head of Animal Control.
Pat Guyer, Animal Control Officer.
Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office. I work with animal control, the Humane Society, and prosecute the infractions that are issued by animal control.
Which is probably something we want to talk about before we leave today, the prosecution process.
All right.
Because I think it, over the last few years, it was just, wasn't adequately, adequately being addressed for one reason or another. No, no reflection on, on the legal, on your department. It was, I think, more so with the court system. But you, Ms. Knock, you have the floor, yes?
I think what I found out in the three years as director, that the codes are good, but we've learned a lot. We have animal control officers that want to do more and are doing more and are serving the community the best way they can. But a lot of times, we have situations where our hands are tied. A lot of times, that's a case where the general public thinks we can do things that we don't have the legal right to do. But there are definitely situations where we could have the codes written better so that we could do more. And this is truly just to serve our community. That, that is our job. That is our goal. So, we have about 11 different things that, that we have come across in the last three years that have been issues. And we sat down with Mr. Illuminati and went through everything with him so that he could, you know, put it into the legal terms. I would rather read it in the more layman terms so that the general public can understand it better, and then Mr. Illuminati can, you know, change it into his terms.
And so the council can understand.
Yeah. And me too, as well. But if you just want me to just kind of go through what we've come up with so far, I think that would be the best way. And you can certainly ask me any questions. I'll be glad to tell you what instances that we've had to deal with these situations. We are having a lot of situations where animals be, are being housed on abandoned properties, either, and I'm not sure if abandoned is the correct term, but not, nobody resides on these properties, or inside of a home that nobody resides in. According to the code, there's really not much we can do about that. If somebody's coming on that property once every 24 hours and putting food and water out, that's basically sufficient to the Wycomico County Code. So, we would like to have something changed where animals shall not be left on a non-inhabited property or in a non-inhabited home.
So often, we find out that when we're trying to tighten regulations to address one issue, we're indirectly, unexpectedly, we're stepping on someone else's rights and someone will immediately come back in and say, well, you know, if you do this, this creates a real problem here. Do you anticipate, as we go through that, that seems to be some of the biggest issues we face with animal control, not understanding why people are doing, following that particular routine. What makes that happen? And if we try to address it, are we assured it isn't going to compromise anyone else?
Situation that it happens most of the time is someone has moved to a different residence, and they're not allowed to have that specific breed at their new residence, and they're leaving them on a separate property just to house them. That's, would you agree that that's most of the time when that does happen?
Correct.
Yeah.
Are there any circumstances that are going to develop where someone happens to have a vacant property and they keep the dog there, and we're gonna be, you know, infringing upon their rights?
I think someone could own a piece of property and want to keep hunting dogs on it, or, you know, just their own personal pets, if that's what they want. But is, is that truly the right thing for an animal? That's, that's what we believe, that that is not the right atmosphere, environment situation for an animal.
And any of, anything that we put together anyway can be adjudicated. So, they, they do have, they do have recourse, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you're saying if they do have property, they have an animal there, but they come and take care of them every day, you're saying that, that, that shouldn't be?
I don't, I don't believe in animals to be left on an, an empty abandoned property with someone coming in, caring for them one time a day. No.
From my, from my experience, we just had this happen the other day. There's a gentleman that has a house, his house burnt down.
Grab the mic, make sure everybody can hear you. Thanks.
In my experience, the other day, we had an instance where I went to a house that the guy's house is apparently burnt down several months ago. When I pulled up on this property, there's a kennel there, three dogs in the kennel, one of the dogs had escaped the kennel. There's nobody there to pick this dog up. It was a mountain wall. The neighbors were all afraid that it's gonna run after them, this kind of thing, you know?
Yeah. I understand.
Kind of an odd situation, but.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm quite sure there's situations like that. But it's just like John said, what about that person that does have the property, but they do take care of their animals and stuff, but they don't live there? That's, that's what John's trying to say, we get recourse back from them because they say they can do that. That's their right.
Not sure about that. My job is to look out for the welfare of the animals.
Yeah, but they're gonna look at and say that they have that right. They can purchase property and put those animals there.
And honestly, that's your job to look at that.
Yeah.
I'm presenting what we see as an animal welfare issue, and then it's your job to decide whether or not that's something that can be upheld or is warranted to be upheld.
And I wasn't really advocating for it. I was just.
I'm not advocating for it. I'm just.
That's why we're having this discussion.
The repercussions come back.
I think sometimes animals need more than just a roof and food. Who wants to just live in an abandoned house with a, with a food and a roof over your head, right? I think there's a lot.
I'm not saying it's might be abandoned house. It might be.
Or any.
Place is well-kept and so forth. They just don't live there. And that might be a circumstance that might come up against us. And.
And in the situations that we have, have seen and been involved in, that is normally not the case.
I understand.
Normally, it is the case of the animal is not well taken care.
There's always gonna be that one case, and that's gonna be the one that's gonna come back against us.
So maybe there's some sort of terminology that, you know, could be added to it? That's, that, that's up to Mr. Illuminati to.
Yeah, I think the terminology probably might be, need to be changed, just to say that no one lives there, that they can't leave their dogs or animals, not even just their animals, whatever it may be. You know, it might be saying, like he said, if there's things that show that they're not taking care of their animals, yeah. But just to say that they, that, that, because they don't live there, that they can't leave their pets or animals there, I think we're stretching a little bit.
I think it comes down to the fact that ownership of an animal or a pet is more than just making sure they have a roof over their head and food. It's about proper attention and companionship. I mean, in a sense, they're sort of prisoners on an island. And I think that's really, there's the, that's why it's the Humane Society, because you're talking about what's the humane way to, to treat animals and.
But, you know.
Are we trying to legislate love here?
Yeah. See, that's what we're looking at. You know, what you might say is what a pet or animal deserve, it might be someone else's opinion, is what they should do for their own animal. They might say that they don't have to be there to love that animal at all times. I mean, right now, my dog's home right now by itself.
That's why I was asking whether or not it was gonna be, it's something.
You gotta, like she said, you're gonna have to watch your terminology. What you said, you just can't say, because no one lives at that property, they can't house their animals there. You gotta get specific reasons why that animal can't be left there by itself.
We've had, we've, we've had, I understand where you're coming from, because I know some of the incidences that you've had. I've actually had to get involved in where people have moved out and left their animals. And, but you also have another side of this, and I guess this is where the attorney needs to, you know, you could have somebody that's well-funded, you know, has a nice house, lives in another house, and they just want their animals to stay in that house. And it's heated, it may be air-conditioned. They may go there every day and feed their, feed their animal. I mean, I don't know if you ever run into that situation, but it could happen. You know, I mean, people.
It could, but.
A lot of people take care, take very good care and spend a lot of money taking care of their pets. And to just say that you, if you own a home, if you own a home and that you have to live in that house if your pet is there, is kind of a, I think that's like Bernie said, it's kind of a stretch to say that you, you have to live in this house if you have a pet in that house is, you need to figure that one out, okay? I think not to lose sight of what we're looking at here. We're trying to look at guidelines that we can set up so that at least it can be, there's some, some recourse that the Humane Society has to address a situation where they surely do recognize that an animal has been, is being treated cruelly. And then, in all cases, it can still go before a judge to make that final decision as to what's right or wrong. It's not all black and white. It's what's fair, and the judge can make that decision as well. Are we setting, are we setting somebody up to end up having to go to court?
For no reason.
For, for no reason. I mean, this is a touchy situation. And I understand you've had problems with people just moving out, leaving pets, but I don't know.
Well, I think some of this could be addressed. I mean, because you're definitely on the right track. But, and Andrew, it might just be, I think, with the definition, you know, when I see like uninhabited, I mean, that may need to be broadened, or uninhabited may need to be defined.
That's.
You know, a little, you know, it's just, it looks like it just kind of ends there. So we might just need to extend that. Because, you know, I think you still get that situation where, and this is just an example I know of, where someone has a hunting lodge, they have literally an employee that goes there every day. They're there pretty regularly, but it's not their residence, you know, but they have their dogs there, they have kennels there, you know, but they're very, you know, they're, they're cared for, they're, you know, you know, I don't even need terms like, under these vacant properties, if it's inhumanely being, you know, those animals are being, inhumanely being cared for, or something. I think just broadening that, because definitely it needs to be addressed in those situations you're talking about, or the, or, yes, that they need to be dealt with. And I think some of these outliers could be covered. I think if we just broaden that definition a little bit.
I think one place to look is potentially the housing code and looking at what's defined as a public nuisance. And maybe if it's gonna create, be part of another violation of the county code, then you can't have the animals there in that context. It would alleviate the concern. So, that's something. Just as a quick primer on how this all came to be, so Ms. Knock and her staff met with me. We looked at a bunch of other county codes and what limitations and policies are in place there. And then pursuant to the county's code, the animal board met. Some of those individuals are present today. That board discussed what concerns and just tried to feather through as much of the concerns that council may ask. And then it was ultimately, those were tailored a little bit more and then brought to you for this continued discussion to make sure that the animals, as well as people's rights, are protected. And that, I think the ultimate goal would be to make sure that animal control and the Humane Society's resources are well-used, and that the public still can exercise and have a dominion control over their animals in the way that they, as the owner deemed just improper.
If, on abandoned property, if somebody owns a home, and say they've got a dog, you know, in a kennel or in the house, and they visit that house every day or whatever, is that home considered abandoned?
Council member, that's a great point. Council member McCain brought that up in possibly defining uninhabited. I know from the housing code, certain structures can be a public nuisance. So if the structure's about to fall over, while they still may own the property, they have other liabilities because the structures on the property may be themselves unsafe. So now you have the animals in unsafe property, which the unsafe structure could be affecting the public at large. And so there would already be another violation. So possibly pairing the uninhabited with another violation of the county code would be the requirement to, for the vacant property, if that would alleviate, it's.
So what describes abandoned? That's, that's.
Why I said I didn't think that was the right word to use. I think uninhabited.
Well, what describes uninhabited? I mean, you, somebody lives in a house for six months and then goes to Florida for six months. Is, that house is uninhabited for six months?
Should an animal be left on that property?
How about if the neighbors are taking care of it?
I think.
You know, I mean, I understand why you're, why you're going after this, but this, this is complicated. You know, you're gonna step on somebody's right really quick. I think what, I think what you're, we're overlooking, we're, they're not, we're not looking to establish any Gestapo tactics, where the Humane Society's gonna go in and, you know, go in, take everything away, lock someone up, give them fines. They're only asking for some kind of leniency, some kind of leeway, so that they can use their own discretion when they know there is a serious problem. And that's all we're trying to establish. And you have to depend on, I believe, the individuals at the Humane Society to be able to recognize what is a, what is an egregious violation and what isn't, and act fairly. And when they issue that, then there's even more recourse because it would have to go before a judge even after that. So, they're only asking us to set the parameters up. And I think we do have to trust their judgment to a certain degree.
Why can't you put their judgment into it? If they know what it is that is inhabited and what, what makes it cruelly for an animal, put it on paper. That's what this. No, no, what they just said, they just said, if it's uninhabited, they just left it open. Be more specific to say, why it's uninhabited?
Sir, I said I was gonna give you the layman's terms, that I was gonna rely on him to give you.
Well, see, we're not hearing that yet.
Give you the.
That's why we're having this discussion.
So, Mr. Illuminati can certainly present what he, how he wrote it out in the, in the change.
That's what we need to see.
Sure.
Can I ask a question? Are we basically looking at B2, it's unlawful, leave an animal unattended in a vacant property? Is that what we're talking about?
Mr. Illuminati.
Definition of unattended, is the one?
I think that he actually did a, he did a definition, vacant property. Great.
The vacant property issue, the unintended. And maybe in here, I just don't see it.
This is what, this is all the same subject, though. Vacant, uninhabited, unattended. It's whatever term they end up using ultimately.
Yeah, but it's saying, an animal unattended in a vacant property. Well, is once a day attended? That, that's, that's one way you could look at it. I mean, if they come once a day, are they attended, even if it's vacant property? Unless there's a vague definition of attended, I didn't see it.
I think what we might want to do is continue with an overview.
Yeah.
And less Q and A, because I'm, I'm guessing, and I'll ask your opinion on this as well, is whether or not this is something that we're going to form a committee and have a committee try to, to evaluate all the pros and cons and then come back. Because we tried this when we did it a few years ago. This council was up here for two hours.
Agreed.
Just like this.
Yep.
And we finally decided to put it to a committee, and they came back to us with their recommendations.
And I agree that that is the best way to handle it.
Okay.
I just want to give you a sense of the different issues that we have had.
Sure.
That we're trying to tighten up to make it easier for our animal control officers to help the citizens. Because many times, it's the neighbors that are the ones that are being affected by all of these issues. And they expect us to be able to do something and handle it when the law does not allow us to do something and handle it. So, yeah, if we can just like kind of briefly go over the different situations we've had, I'll be glad to give you specifics on different stories that we have. And if you want him to, to tell you how he worded it, that's, that's fine. But we know this isn't gonna be like a quick fix. This is just, just the start.
Yeah, this first one. And, and don't get me wrong, questions anytime. I mean, you know, that's what we're here for. So, the questions are fine. I just don't want to belabor it.
Yeah.
So that we don't, we don't miss the target.
Agreed.
That's, that's item one.
It's gonna be lunchtime soon. Animals that reside outside must have proper bedding. This bedding can be straw, pine shins, pine needles, blankets and pillows, and cloth bedding are not acceptable materials. We are not specific in bedding. Actually, I don't even think we have anything in our code at all about an animal being provided with bedding inside of their shelter. So, we're looking to add something about bedding. And I can tell you, most other codes do have specifics on what bedding is proper and what bedding is not.
There's no mention of straw flooring or anything now?
No. There's no mention of bedding at all.
Okay.
In, in our code. So that, that's another thing. Animals that are out longer than 30 minutes need to have proper shelter, food, and water, even if the temperatures do not fall below 32 or rise above 90 degrees unless they are attended by their owner. So, right now, if you technically read the code, and I can't say that we always follow it like that, but a dog does not have to be provided shelter unless the temperatures fall below 32 or rise above 90 degrees. Now, everybody interprets that as an animal has to have shelter, and that is truly not the case. So, you know, it could be 89 degrees out and a dog be left outside all day and not, by our code, have to have any kind of shelter. Now, if you're out with your dog, that's no problem. You can be out with your dog all day long with no shelter.
And can I touch on that? And numerous times, even when we did this several years ago, the definition of animals came up so many times. Is it a?
And can I touch on that? And numerous times, even when we did this several years ago, the definition of animals came up so many times. Is it a goat that's in your backyard or is it a farm animal? Or is it your pet dog? So I think we should clarify.
Domestic animals.
Maybe we should clarify that. Because that question, like I said, had been brought up many times.
And now it's, it's very cool to own goats and chickens and, and all kinds of little things, even in somewhat residential areas. So that definitely, I would say a domesticated animal. And that would cover a goat or, you know, anything like that.
Okay.
Unless it's being raised for food purposes.
Right, which would be hopefully a farm.
Exactly. Okay. Right now, it is mandatory for a male dog to be neutered if it's brought into the shelter two times in one year. I think it should be mandatory female or male. I don't see.
And that is like if my dog gets out and you'll pick it up?
If we pick it up two times in the same year, it would be mandatory neutering or spaying at, at the person's expense. So right now, it's if a female dog in heat gets out two times in one year. Or a male dog in general gets out two times in one year.
And can I ask another question on that? Do you have any regulations on how many times you pick up the animal? Because there was a dog from the county that jumped in my backyard, I know 10 times. And the former director before the guy finally came and got the dog and I haven't seen it since, but I know it was 10 times.
Okay. So no, there would be no specifics for us to physically remove the dog, but we could continuously cite them. And we could max out the citations every instance. And then you would give the maximum citation every time it happened after that. But as far as like physically removing the dog. No, that would not be allowed by law.
I suppose if you could get that message to those dogs, they wouldn't leave home.
If only they would listen. There needs to be definite tightening up on the nuisance barking issue. So everybody thinks that because their neighbor's dog barks all night long, that we have the right to come and take it. We do not. A nuisance is on the burden of the person to prove that it's a nuisance. And honestly, if you ask me, if my neighbor's dog is barking in the middle of the day, I could care less. If I'm a nurse that works night shift and my neighbor's dog is barking in the middle of the day, yep, it's going to make me a little bit upset. So it, that just whole section needs to be tightened up a little bit. We just have no recourse. Once we've maxed out the fines. I think the recourse would be you have to bring your dog inside. Period. If it's a nuisance to your neighbor and your dog is barking, after, after three citations, you should have to bring your dog inside. And we should be able to enforce that. So that, that's my idea on that one. Roosters are a huge problem now. Even in residential areas, people have roosters. Doesn't affect the city because the city has limits on how many roosters you can have. I think you can only have one in the city. Can't have any roosters in the city? Okay. So you can't have roosters in the city. But in the county, even though people are living in residential areas, they have the roosters. So we wanted to add crowing to, to the nuisance noise because that is not in there.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's a tough one.
I know.
So, so what happens to a farmer, what's happens to a farmer that has land hens?
So, so maybe we have to put residential neighborhoods or something like that.
Get poultry houses right next to the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, I don't know how to fix the problem, but I'm just telling you, it's, it's an issue.
Maybe the owner lives in a residential, the owner of the rooster lives in a residential district.
So I, I.
It says neighborhood.
I live in a residential area, but I'm actually zone agriculture. If I wanted to have roosters on my property, I could have roosters on my property.
So then we got to turn around and look at the Right to Farm Act.
100%, that's all, that's all on you guys. I'm just telling you.
Like a rooster's right to farm, but okay. I was thinking of that, but I wasn't saying.
Yeah.
That's why we got a right to farm. I mean, you move into the, into an agricultural.
District.
Area, you might expect to get that.
100%. And that's why I, I feel like the burden should be on the complainant to file and prove that this is a nuisance to their life. And then it's up to a judge to decide whether or not it's truly a nuisance.
Many of these nuisances you're referring to are from another neighbor, not a farm.
Right, correct.
That's going to be a tough one.
I, I totally agree. I'm just saying we deal with this all the time.
Yeah.
And people think that we can do something about it and we can't. And, and I'm fine if you guys decide that we can't. I just, I'm presenting the issues that we have.
That's great.
Right now, we as the Humane Society, as a courtesy for our fee amount fee, provide microchipping. We do that because we want every animal microchipped. Now, microchipping is not a tracking system. It is just a very small size of the race, little thing that goes under their skin. That allows my animal control officer, while he picks that dog up, he can scan it right from his truck. He can log in, pull up their information and return the dog without ever having to bring it in to the Humane Society. This is a service that we are providing out of, you know, from our heart. I mean, we foot the bill for it. These microchips are not inexpensive. But we feel like that is the right thing to do to get these animals home when we possibly can. We would like to make it mandatory that the animal gets microchipped if it's brought in running at large. Very rarely does somebody ever say, no, you're not going to put a microchip in my animal, but I would prefer that they don't have that option.
I, I don't like the idea of mandatory. I did have my pet Dalmatian a microchipped and never had to use it, but I, I think it should be voluntary. And hopefully we can educate the public and get them to do it.
Any number of violations before you would want to microchip it? Like after.
Well, if you're not willing to just make it mandatory, if they're brought in running at large, then make it two times in one year, just like the spay neuter.
Sure, it's an idea.
Does making it mandatory help? I mean, if they don't want it done and the dog keeps still getting moved.
You need a mic.
Well, if you make it mandatory, they don't have a choice.
You need a microphone because the public can't hear you. Sorry, it's our system's not the best.
My question is if making it mandatory doesn't really do me any good. Doesn't do anybody any good because if this dog keeps continuing to be a problem, having a microchip in isn't going to do me any good because I'm not going to take it to their house anyway. I'm going to take it back to the shelter and call them and say, hey, your dog's out again, come pay the fees.
Right, you got to resolve the problem.
I don't know that making it mandatory after a number of, of events is, is a good idea. I think we can just either make it mandatory upfront because you've lost some ones, hey, you're going to save you some time and money and us some time and money. Or we don't do it. You know what I mean? Doing it after a number of times, again, just from my experience, there's no point in that. So.
Because those people aren't going to follow the rules anyway.
Grab that mic and then he can have that. We got, there, there. Hey, you go. I think you can move it.
Oh, does it slide?
It'll move. Mike, you can do that one over.
All right. Is that good?
Yes. Thanks.
All right. We are having some issues with domestic farm animals, not having proper space. The animals are cared for. That is not the issue, but it is way too many animals on a small piece of property. Now, that is covered in the zoning code, but it is not being enforced. And we need either for zoning to enforce that or to give us more rights to enforce it.
Why isn't zoning enforcing it? What's the excuse?
I don't know. I don't know who's gotten complaints about the property on the corner of Wallston Switch Road and Old Ocean City.
I have.
Okay, so that's a, that's a local petting zoo. They have way too many animals on a piece of property that is, I don't even know if it's an acre.
According to what I've, I've, and talking to the executive's office, they just meet the amount of land that allows county not to do enforcement on it.
Okay, so.
Now, if they're supposed to have an acre and a half, they got an acre and three quarter, whatever. Numerous complaints on this.
In residential districts is livestock, horses, cows, ponies, donkeys, burrows and other domestic animals may be kept, raised or bred for the use and enjoyment of persons residing on the lot involved, providing that only one such animal shall be permitted for each 15,000 square feet of land. That is not the case for that property.
Can't the property be designated as farm property?
Can it be designated as?
Right, I, I don't, I'm all for farms, but if you've got a small lot like that, it's not a farm.
So what is your, what is your?
My point is we don't have any recourse to, we don't have anything in our codes about these kind of animals.
I'd like to invite the rest of the council to go look at that property.
Yeah.
They've thinned them out a little bit right now, sir.
Pardon me?
They've thinned them out a little bit.
I can't hear you, sir. You need to really.
They've thinned them out a little bit. They've, they don't have as many there as they've had over the last period of time. I've been checking on the last couple.
Sometimes you'll see them there and sometimes they're out on events. So part of them will be gone. And they do have another property now out off of Nanicoke Road, which we get complaints on regularly as well. But we just don't have anything in our codes for those kind of animals.
You said they're out on events?
It's a petting zoo.
The county actually hires them to do, do the Wycomico County Fair.
Yeah. So Ms. Knock, on some of these complaints that you have, have you got a list of suggestions or recommendations that you've looked into?
For?
For any of them, like this one, for instance.
Yeah, we get at least, we were getting two complaints a week.
No, I'm asking, do you have any recommendations that you would like to present the council?
Recommendations as far as.
Are you changing?
No, no. Do you have any right in front of you that you would like to present us? It sounds like you're asking us to come up with regulations for that.
Well, Mr. Illuminati does.
For that.
He's asking, are you, are you suggesting that more square footage be required per animal, something like that?
Yeah.
What, what, what amendment are you trying to make?
I think the zoning code covers that. I think the zoning code is correct in, in how it's worded. I think in our animal control codes, we don't have anything about us enforcing it. So zoning is looking at us to enforce it, but we don't have anything in our codes to enforce it.
You're looking at zoning.
And we're saying zoning has to enforce it because they have it in their codes.
So Mr. Illuminati, to answer Councilman Dodd's question, is, is this something we're going to have to address through planning and zoning?
It's possible to either replicate what's in the planning and zoning and put it in here, or take it out of planning and zoning and put it in the animal control section.
Maybe we should get planning and zoning in here to explain why they can't.
Well, they're available. We, we'll make a note that planning and zoning needs to, to weigh in on this.
And I will tell you that I have talked extensively with them and we do work together and we work together very well. They are always at my side if I need them for something and vice versa. And I have offered if they need to have these animals removed from the property, that we will definitely take care of that. But we aren't the ones to initiate any kind of removal. And I'm not saying that's what needs to happen. I'm just saying this is a piece of property that it's inappropriate to have the amount of animals on that they have. Yes, they can feed them. And, and they're all in good health, but it's not enough space and it's against that particular code. So it's something we can't enforce, but we are the ones that are fielding the complaints for it.
So maybe you can make a recommendation to planning and zoning, what you think the square footage needs to be per animal.
I, I think the square footage is exactly right. One animal per 15,000 square feet. But that property is not.
I'm told, I'm told that property is large enough that that, that doesn't meet that requirement is what I've been told. That's what I've been told. There's a certain, you reach a certain point of a piece of property.
How many square feet are in an acre? Do you know?
No, I can't.
1,560.
Forty?
Got it.
43,500.
I can't tell you, but that, that's, that's the reasoning I've got, that it's, the property is large enough that it doesn't fall under that regu- regulation that you're reading.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon, I think it's a good idea to have planning and zoning the next time we meet for a work session.
So is it a plan, but you're saying it's not a zoning issue. You're saying, what are you, is it an enforcement issue? But I, I thought you were saying that they haven't violated.
It's a code enforcement zoning code issue.
To what extent? That you recommend that it be double the space now from what we have currently?
No, I'm telling you that that, that property is not, is not the size that he thinks it is. It's, I think you could only technically put, have three animals on that property, according to this. I could be wrong.
That's what you're saying. And, and what I'm saying is what I've been told. I'm not saying it. I'm saying that's what I've been told because believe me, I mean, the amount of people that's called me about this one property. And you know, because I've called you.
We were getting it two times a week as well.
Yeah, and, and.
Or cared for.
Yeah, they're fed, they're well fed.
Well, it sounds like to me that's going to be an issue that the county has to deal with, with between Joe and planning and zoning and however we enforce that one property.
You're the president, yeah.
But as far as what you're looking for, you're, you're not recommending any changes to this?
No, I'm just recommending that we put.
You don't have it, you can't enforce it because it's planning and zoning, which is going to get to my point here. I don't know if this is a, can be done, but Mr. Illuminati, is there able to put language in there giving like you all the ability to enforce planning and zoning or, or county code that involves animal, animal welfare?
That can be explored?
Right, without, without necessarily changing, you know, anything planning and zoning, but just, but it gives them, because it's an animal welfare issue and it violates, you know, code, then it, they have that ability.
Part of the issue may be in exploring, cleaning up the language in that code. If it's one animal of each per 15,000 square feet of land. Expounding on, is it developed land, undeveloped land? Because if you've got 15,000 square foot house. Or, you know, 14,500 square foot housing, you only have 500 square feet of yard, then technically you've got your 15,000 square feet, but you have the animals running around in this very tiny area. So it may just be cleaning up specifically, can you have one dog, one horse, one cat, one goat, one chicken per 15,000 square feet? Or is it you only have one animal per 15,000 square feet? And that may be where the issue is that they're compliant under the most open interpretation of the current code. And, and cleaning up developed land versus undeveloped land and one animal per 15,000 square feet or one animal of each type per 15,000 square feet.
What we do is leave it up to your office to decide based on what Joe's concerns are and many of the public, what you might think is the best solution legally to correct all that, to make it.
You know, there's also been complaints about the chickens and the animals out, goats in the road. They've had goats and chickens out in the road. There's complaints about flies from the neighbors because they don't have a, they keep the manure cleaned up properly. There's just a whole, whole list, you know, and we've had, I know you've been there, planning and zoning's been there. Department of Ag's been there. MDE's been involved.
I know that there are some citations or whatever the, they're issued.
Multiple citations about trash and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot going on on that property.
All right. Well, Andrew, if you could sort of maybe look into that and let us know, if you can create some options for us. Thanks.
We need to add something about when you find an animal, not removing it from the county that it was found in until you have contacted animal control. We're having a lot of issues with people picking up animals. Taking them to another county or another state. And then people have no ability to find their animals. So something along the, you know, lines of, you know, you have X 24 hours to report any found animal to Wycomico County Animal Control. Now, if Wycomico County, if the people wanted to hold the animal and it's all documented and Officer Guyer says, okay, I have it all documented. You can go ahead and, and take the animal with you and hold it yourself. That's one thing. But we are having a big issue. We just had an animal that was taken to Dorchester County. And we had to get Dorchester Animal Control involved in going and getting that animal back because it wasn't even past its stray hold.
What do you mean taking it? What do you mean by taking?
They pick them up as a stray and then they take them to wherever they're going.
Is the dog tagged and licensed and so forth?
Well, the dog was not microchipped.
I mean, but it was tagged or so forth?
I'm, I'm not sure. I don't think the dog had a rabies tag on it either.
Somebody found a dog, liked it and took it home?
Pretty much. So what happens is, is what you find in a very kind term, maybe kidnapped in some instances.
Yeah. It's criminal.
And then basically the own, the owner who maybe didn't even have the dog at large, but is now looking for their dog, is checking Facebook. And now they see photos of their dog with somebody else. And ultimately, that's how these dogs are found, or these animals are found at the end of the day. And so what this will require is somebody who finds an animal to report it. As Ms. Knock said, they can still maintain it, but then there will be a list. So, because the first thing one does when their animal's lost is call the Humane Society, call animal control. Hey, did my dog come in? Does anybody have it? But that's sort of where we're seeing is dog, animals being taken to other counties.
And we're dealing with a lot of rescues and wannabe rescues and wannabe rescuers. So I just think it needs to be reported. You have something documented where if you find an animal, you have to report it within 24 hours.
Such ordinances like that in other counties?
I don't know if there's specifically that. And I know that there are, yes, there are. There are about holding animals as strays. And how much time before you can consider it your own pet. I always thought it was 30 days for the general public before they could consider it theirs. I'm not sure that that's been documented anywhere in our, in our code. The Humane Society's policy is six days. That is, we have to hold by law six days. I make it six business days, not just six general days. Because we've had situations where people. had situations where people have been on vacation, and someone else has been watching their animals, and the animal got out and the person didn't tell them. And they come home from vacation seven days later, and we don't have the dog anymore.
So if they had the chip, nobody could claim it after 30 days?
If it was microchipped, microchip trumps everything. If an animal is microchipped, we have to jump through hoops to make sure that we get that animal back to the proper owner.
Another reason.
And we would never, if we had a microchipped animal, oh, we wouldn't be able to do anything with it for about 30 days. We would have to hold it.
So does that fall under the definition of unattended?
I don't know. I hope you're joking. Um, let's see. Uh, right now, if an animal is deemed dangerous, it's mandatory spay or neutering. I think it should be mandatory if it's deemed potentially dangerous or dangerous. It's just another way to get control of the nefarious stuff going on with some of these backyard breeders. But I don't know if we're stepping on someone's, if we're not stepping on someone's rights by doing it for dangerous, I can't see that we'd be stepping on their rights by doing it for potentially dangerous as well.
I determine it.
I'm sorry.
None.
What, what's considered dangerous and potentially dangerous?
And dangerous is considered if a dog has basically done severe injury to something, whether it's a person or another animal. Potentially dangerous is a situation where dog got released from his owner, runs up to you and bites you in your arm a couple times, it may deem it potentially dangerous. Means this dog needs to be watched on, but it doesn't really fall under where it gets a lot of, uh, precautions put on it where, you know, you have to walk it muzzled, all this stuff. But it's just a, hey, we need to keep an eye on this dog, because it did something once, not real sure whether it was intentional or not. That's kind of the way I interpret that. But yeah, potentially, the, the physical wording is for dangerous, it's a severe injury or death to another person or animal.
Okay.
So.
Potential factor being brought into play, is there any recourse that individual have before the dog, I'll say dog, is spayed or neutered? I mean, before you actually do that, do they have any recourse?
Would they have the right to?
To go before the animal, appeal board.
Okay.
And then, and that's sort of where, that's the check and balance. It's not just them saying potentially dangerous. They have to make the decision to go before the board.
Great, okay.
Yeah, so even though we do try to deem a dog, they still have the right to, to fight the deeming in general.
Okay.
Uh, housing for animals. Right now, it basically says, a house has to have four, three sides, a roof, a front, a floor. There has to be more specifics about the construction of these houses, because you could throw up tarps, sorry, tarps, to make those sides, and that would not be sufficient construction for an animal's house. So we're looking to add more specifics, um, and if, I don't know if you want to read that section of how you worded it.
The shelter shall have a solid floor, raised at least two inches above the ground and appropriate to protect from flooding, a weatherproof roof, and strike four walls, and put enclosed sides with no cracks, one of which shall contain a doorway through which the animal can easily enter and exit. Proper and sufficient exterior bedding shall also be present in the shelter. Bedding shall be kept dry. And that's pretty much what is in, I believe it was Frederick County, Anne Arundel County, and Hartford County's code. They all had that same exact language. So basically, as Ms. Knox was saying, right now, the only requirement is you shall have a floor appropriate to protect from flooding, and a roof and four walls. So what individuals do is they use tarps and, uh, wooden pallets.
Is there how, how, housing code even require somebody to have a bed? I mean, I, I understand what you're, what we're trying to do, but you gotta be careful how far you stretch. I don't think our housing code even says that a person has to have a bed in their house, and sleep on the floor if they want to.
The issue with animals is that you have someone that can't fend for themselves, and somehow you have to establish guidelines.
And I understand, I agree with you on your, I agree with you on your, your housing part, but, you know, at some point in time, if you've got a big dog with a lot of hair, like a Newfoundland or something like that, you know, is that something that they're gonna need?
It does allow us to make decisions based on the size and, um, breed of an animal as well. It does allow them that leeway.
A homeless person will sleep on a sidewalk, Joe, but that's their decision. An animal doesn't always have that choice.
Councilmember, I think the other thing to look at is this, the word we use is bedding, not bed. So you're not looking for a little four-sided bed.
I know the difference.
But it's, it's as Councilmember Cannon said, it's more for, because as a person, you can choose to do that or choose not to. A dog can't. So you're giving him, he has the ability, if you put it out there, he's got the ability laying it. If he chooses not to and goes out and lays over here, that's his choice. But you have to give him that option.
How about if he goes in and drags the bedding outside?
Right. That's, that's on the dog at that point, but the bedding is there.
That's called a bad dog.
Yes.
Yeah, but, so you show up and you say, all the bedding's outside, so you're in violation.
Wouldn't do that. Wouldn't do that.
No, we wouldn't cite them for that. We would, we would give them a correction, but it wouldn't even be a bed, because that would not be allowed, because that does, that retains the cold and the wetness. It has to be straw or pine or something like that.
But Councilmember, on that same subject, doghouse is the same thing. You can put a doghouse out there for the dog. If I go over there, somebody says he's standing out in the rain, but his doghouse is right there and he ain't using it, that's on him. But the doghouse has to be there for him to be able to use.
And we don't, we don't go out and write citations willy-nilly. We, we always give the people the benefit of the doubt in the beginning, and we give them verbal and written corrections first. It, it, it has to be a severe case of, you know, someone being neglectful, that they're going to ultimately get a citation. And that's the last on my list.
That's all?
Yes.
Oh, wow, I thought.
See, it's not that bad.
We're gonna follow up with planning and zoning about this, um, animal, when you talked about a not enough room. I think there needs to be, um, because what I've been told is they can't enforce it because they, there's enough room there. And that's what I've been told.
Any other questions?
It, um, when, when we did this work several years ago, I, I knew we were going to come back and do a lot more, because we weren't finished then, and I appreciate you coming back and tried to refine a lot of this. And then, I do want to mention, I saw, I think it was yesterday, day before, Officer Guyer, um, on one of the Facebook groups about this big snake you went, I, I commend you for doing that, because a lot of people don't like snakes.
Officer Guyer is new to our organization, and, uh, he is a godsend. That's all I can say. He's, he's made my job a lot easier.
So I'm told it's against the law to kill a snake in the state of Maryland?
It is.
It is.
I looked it up.
Mm-hmm.
Any snake.
Yep, you can't kill a snake.
How many people you don't be locked up?
And no, he did not kill that snake. He released it.
Well, again, just as Larry said, we really appreciate what you're doing, because you've got, you have your regular work to do, first of all, and foremost, and I know it's a lot. And then to take the time to, to delve into this, this is night and day. So, um, I guess what we'll have to do, Mrs. Hurley could help us maybe, um, try to figure out how we, how we put together the committee the last time. I don't think it needs to be as large as it was the last time. It's only maybe 15 people, but, uh, and, you know, we'll ask maybe Mrs. Hurley to work with you on what you think would be the best combination, and, uh, get this thing moving as quickly as we can, and come back to us and hopefully resolve this soon enough.
And I'm not even sure if I was the right person that was supposed to be initiating this, but I'm the one that lives it every day.
Right.
And I think our animal control officers live it every day, and they should have a say. But I'm more than willing to do whatever they need me to do.
We knew when we did this before, it was a work in progress, you know, we always. Mrs. Hurley, can you get some kind of, um, statement from the executive's office about the Wollston Switch Road property, why that's not been, there, there was some reasoning that the property was, square footage-wise, was over the limit, where we could not do anything.
This is the one that there was multiple animals on a small parcel?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I, I thank you all for doing what you do for animals. Like, um, Mr. Cannon said, they can't speak for themselves, so somebody needs to.
My pleasure.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
We, I will let you speak. We have time, certainly. If you, if you, it's a little out of order, but come on up. If you want to speak, yeah, you took the time to be here. I'm okay with that. Let us know your name and your position.
My name is Cody, and I actually live at that property.
Okay.
Some of the provisions that were set forth, I was curious about what consider, you brought a nail in the head with what's abandoned and what's not. There are farmers that lease land that have goats and cattle that they don't reside at, and that's their form of income. So I don't know how you can squeeze that for, not for them, but somebody else. I just don't see how that could apply. As far as shelter and whatever's being adequate, the definition of shelter is a place that gives leeway from the elements, whether it's a tarp, a pallet. I'm not saying we have any of those things, but I'm just speaking for everybody. If the protection is there, I don't see why it should matter if the animal's protected. Um, the, just like a- anything in life, I drive a 97 Dodge Dakota beat up. It gets me to where I'm going. Someone else drives a 2022 Benz. They both serve the same purpose. They take us to work. The shelters provide shelter. Um, the rooster ordinance, if you're by property that's zoned agricultural, and your neighbor has a problem with it, it is zoned agricultural for a reason. Uh, there's been talking about neighborhood. What's the definition of a neighborhood? Is it just someplace where there's an HOA, uh, houses clumped together? Is that particular neighborhood in an agricultural zoning? If you can have farms in agricultural zoning, I don't see why the roosters could cause issues. I understand some people don't like them, but they also should know that if you buy a rural piece of property, that those things can happen, just like smells. Some people don't like chicken houses' smells. In terms of space and animals, animals have been dry allotted for years. People do this, that doesn't mean they're not taken care of. A lot of farming industries dry lot their animals to help with parasite loads, and it doesn't mean that they're not taken care of. Uh, the wording for what they proposed was very vague. If there is some standard of how many animals per acre or whatever, who determines that? Is it broken down by species of animal? If she was talking about the four, five animals that she thinks you could have, that should apply to dogs and chickens. If you have five chickens on your property, that's all you, you can have, based off the wording that they presented. A lot of the, some of the problems I had were the wording and the definitions. What's the definition of a shelter? It's a definite, it provides shelter. Whether it's made up of a slate roof that's going to last 200 years, or a tarp that you have to replace every year, it, it, just as long as it's not leaking. Like, if they have provisions and they're saying, if upon an inspection, the property, it's leaking, I, I, I can get behind that. I understand that. But to make people spend money where they not necessarily would, you're making them choose how they want to live. Um, the guy explained the potentially dangerous animals, so that's fine. I, that was vague.
What I, what I would do to, to help you is, though, because, um, what we're trying to do here is just get a brief overview.
Yes.
What, what the Humane Society wants to propose now.
Yes.
Um, what I would suggest is, the committee, and we'll probably suggest to the committee that they do open their meetings to public hearing?
Yes.
So that they can get input from you.
Okay.
That will be the proper forum for you to address that.
Okay.
Before this council changes anything, we will also have public hearings as well.
Okay.
So you can address it at that time.
Okay.
I think what we should do is let the committee get together, uh, begin to, to go through their process.
Okay.
Allow you to speak there, and then you can come back in here, because it's not going, it's not helping us too much right now until we know what our ang game is.
I got you.
So your, your solutions may be addressed, or your, your issues may be.
Through final provisions.
And solved through the committee before it comes here.
Gotcha.
Okay, just to let you know. Yeah, I was getting ahead of myself, but I wasn't sure what, what you were asking.
How do I get, how do I get the information of when the next committee is?
That's a great question. Um, I'm going to make sure that we'll, we'll post it. What might be the best way to handle that?
Well, we would have.
For people to get in, to get input to this without having to look for it?
We can do, like we did with the, um, charter review committee, have a website, and then you can, you know, submit comments online.
We could put it maybe on, when you, when you log into WycomicoCounty.org, uh, we can have IT put something on the, like a link right at the very, at the very front page, so they don't have to hunt and peck for it?
Certainly, it's on the county council page, but I can talk to IT about putting it on the homepage.
Well, even if it's just a link that goes to the county webpage, but we'll do that, so that you can go online periodically and find out, because we're not sure how long it's going to take us to get the committee together.
Okay.
And start it. But all you have to do is you go online to WycomicoCounty.org, and then we'll make sure there's a link there so that you can't miss that opportunity.
Okay.
Okay.
So, did you say that I could only comment there? I can't come and talk, or?
We, we haven't designed that website yet, so, um, I mean, you can certainly welcome, you're welcome to talk at a council meeting during some comments.
He's wondering about the committee. I, I can't speak for the committee on how they might do it, but usually in public hearings, a lot of times, you try to avoid a lot of one-on-one and debating right there at the meetings.
Yes, I'm not trying to debate. I'm just trying to put more facts out there.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. It's been very.
Because like, I think a lo- a lot of the things you guys talked about were dogs, and a lot of these vague things apply to farm animals.
Right.
That are livestock, what, and.
And there may need to be three sections for it.
Yes.
So you're, you're making a lot of good points. So that opportunity will be presented to you to speak, and.
Okay.
However the committee might want to engage, that would be up to the, the committee.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we appreciate you being here, taking the time. Entertaining a motion to adjourn,
Mr. President?
Recession, I guess, yes.
Um, yes, I was going to say lunch is here, um, but we do have the Board of Education coming early today. They can be here at noon.
15 minutes.
Uh, we may, well, we'll hold them up till 12:15. Thank you.
John, I have just some literature here about, um, animals and some of the things that are discussed today, things, they're sort of different.
Pass it out. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll be back, uh, at recess for half an hour. We'll do lunch for half an hour and get back here with the Board of Ed. Thanks.
Especially for someone who has a public servant.
Yeah, I mean, he, and he's so kind of bold and.
Bombastic and the things that he said.
Right.
Okay, we're reconvening, uh, so Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2022-15 for, uh, July 20th, 2022. And, uh, our next item on the work session is a quarterly work session with the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Education.
And the new superintendent, Dr. Stoffer.
Yes, sir.
So, um, if you'd like to come up, uh, we have three mics here, and you can share. So, Dr. Stoffer, I'll leave it up to you as to who, um, what reinforcements you want to bring.
You brought them with you. Bringing them up here.
It's really good to see everybody, and we appreciate.
First, good afternoon. I appreciate it. Mike Stoffer, Superintendent of Schools. It feels different to, to introduce myself that way. I am, uh, joined by our Chairman of the Board of Education, Gene Malone, Dr. Rick Briggs, Chief Academic Officer. I am excited to introduce to you our new Chief Finance and Operations Officer, Dr. Brian Regger. Going to do an outstanding job. And we have our Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, Mrs. Kim Miles. And out in the audience, we have, um, Board Member Ann Sowthauske, and then also our Comptroller Jessa Reed.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you, um, coming in, and, um, we look forward to, to working with you here, and, uh, I will let you take the floor and.
Yes, um, the agendas for the work session are coming around to you now, and first on the agenda is the discussion on staggered terms for board members.
Okay.
So Dr. Stoffer asked me to lead that ironic discussion the day after a primary, but, so, we'll leave it at that. So, let me say it like this. I think it's a good idea to have staggered terms for the Board of Education. Surrounding counties do. We, I mean, uh, Mrs. Hurley sent me a lot of them, and a lot of counties do. But I guess my point or question to you all would be, why is it that much important for us to be staggered, and you're not staggered, and the county executive's not staggered? Because you could have a situation, there's going to be a lot of new councilmen based on people not running, maybe a new county executive, and the school board is no different. So, um, and you want to sta, I mean, we talk about staggering our terms, maybe we should stagger everybody's. And you guys must be more important, because you make more money than we do too, so, I'm just basing it on private sector. Uh, but, I mean, honestly, it's a good idea, and most of the counties have, like, you'd have one, two, and four go, you know, in four years, and then I guess you'd have to have two districts in at large go in six years, so you could stagger it the first time. But honestly, it's, it's important a conversation for all elected officials, not just the Board of Ed. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, So I'll leave it at that, and we can have some interaction if you want.
It's ironic you say that because, you know, when I saw that on the list or whatever, you know, I just made a note or two, but my first, I guess, thought to like, well, we don't do it. The state legislators don't do it. I mean, the same logic would apply, you know, and, and to me, it sounds good. I don't, I don't know if it's a good idea or not a good idea. I mean, I think it's, I think in the end, it's all about the same. But there's a cost to it when you do, when you do staggered terms. I mean, it costs more to have staggered elections, but the other side of it is, the reality is, you know, and I know people say, oh, yeah, everybody could get replaced. Now, we all could get replaced, but when's that ever happen? You know, there's never been seven, like council people replaced, there's never been every school board member and these other kinds replaced. I mean, there's always, you know, a few go, a few stay, a few get elected out, elected in, you know, it's, you know, and another thing too with staggered is now you're, you're like always changing, sort of, you know, that's not necessarily an advantage either. You know, you're always kind of, there's always a little bit of, you don't get that continuity.
Right.
Of like, you know, you're Chair of the Board, you know, you all sort of get a working relationship, takes a little time to develop that. Some, some things, you know, we, we've worked in, well, just with council, you know, there's some legislative things we've worked on. We're, we're three and a half years now into the.
Half.
The term that we still don't have them, we still haven't got these two completion, but if we were switching people halfway through the process, well, that might change the whole, make it even harder then.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Interesting thing would be, is how you would do it. So you come to the point, say, okay, we're going to stagger these elections, so that means you've got a point, or somehow or other have two people or however many you want to do it, serve another two years.
Yeah, either that or you shorten them to, but either way, I don't know how you do that either. You're right.
That would be, that would create a fight.
Yeah.
Probably there's a animosity among some people, you know.
Yep.
Some, you know, so it's, as I say, it sounds good, how you do it.
Well, I've, I've always been a fan of staggered of elections for one of the reasons you just stated. It may not have ever happened that the slate's been wiped out, but it could very well help it happen. In our situation, we would have eight new faces, including the county executive, and then the only person that knows how to run the show possibly would be the existing.
Rockstein.
Director of Administration, right? So what you would have to do, like you mentioned, is somebody would be gifted two more years or somebody would lose two more years, and, and there is a cost to that, but there would always be an election, whether it's a gubernatorial, the presidential race. And Cecil County does it, but I don't know any other county. I think Miss Ackley and I had this discussion before, and she may know what other counties do it, but we do know Cecil County has.
There's several doing it.
Worcester does staggered on the Board of Ed. I didn't read Somerset's, and some other counties stagger them too, but not everybody does.
Josh?
There are a lot of them that do.
Clarify the state, what Larry's getting at is that there's only one county in the, in the state that does that for their counselor or their.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was.
Cecil County is, I think, the only one, still the only one that does that.
I'm sorry.
Right, I didn't know of any other counties, but if, if the board did it, I think it would make good sense for the council to do it at the same time.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea to stagger terms, but just the only thing I would caution on is that if you're going to do it, I would do both the board and the county council, because when you're having an election during a presidential year is very different than running in a gubernatorial year. So you don't want to have three school board members out there by themselves running in a presidential race. It's, it's, it's very polarizing. I mean, we've all just been through a primary. It's even worse during a presidential. So if you're going to do some, I'd recommend doing all, so it's, you, you don't have that hone in concentration on education and getting these three people, you know, put out there.
Yeah, I don't have much of an inclination for it. I, I get it, like Bill said, it sounds good in theory, but then when you get into the actuality of it, I think it also creates a problem that nobody really knows when you're, when you're running. You know, it's like, well, are you running this year? No? And you got three people running, and it gets very fragmented, I think. I'm, I'm okay with leaving well enough alone. And I agree with you, Gene, and, and I think that's the idea, is that it's just not suggesting for the Board of Education. It would be for, for both bodies of government.
Can I speak to that? I don't know how Cecil does it unless it, maybe it's not a charter county, but the county council specifically is four-year term. You would need a Maryland constitutional amendment to change the council. The board is statutory, they, they could be changed by the council.
Okay.
You just have to figure out which way you're going to do it.
That's, okay.
Have citizens reached out to you? I mean, clearly the board is living it, so they understand it, but has any other, has any other groups said or teachers have said, hey, this might be a problem or?
I haven't heard from groups, but I've heard from individuals throughout the year, like, you know, you're all up for reelection. I think the topic came up because we also were searching for a superintendent, so it hit their mind, okay, you could lose all the board members and a new superintendent starts July 1st, so that could be an issue, but no groups have said, hey, you need to do this. Just people asking me why.
And then that's when you start having bureaucrats take over.
It ain't broke, so.
Right.
Why go down that path?
Next item we have is a recruitment and retention. I know that's been in the plans for quite some time. I know that's part of what Kirwin wants to stress, and I know that you've already have that in your, in your, in your wheelhouse.
We do. So the second item on the agenda, and the first three were items that were requested by the council. Neglected to say that earlier, and then the last three were items that we put on the agenda as well. But in regards to teacher recruitment and retention, obviously that is something that is on our minds even more so at this point in time. And we have some, some things that we go through for recruitment. We have a Grow Your Own Initiative. The Teacher Academy of Maryland is a CTE program that works with our students that are interested in going into the education field. It is a CTE completer and something that students could enter into as early as ninth or 10th grade as they go through that program. We also have a Grow Your Own Initiative with our non-certificated staff, those that aren't certificated to be teachers. They may be working in clerical positions or instructional assistants, and we work with them to make sure that they can have tuition reimbursements. We flex their schedule so that they are able to accommodate their coursework or student teaching as well. And then we also support them through that process in hopes that we can retain them and to be a teacher for us as we move forward. We have very strong partnerships currently with Warwick, Salisbury University, and UMES, and we do serve as all of our schools for student interns, and that's a big recruitment process, obviously, as student teachers come in to learn the profession and learn the trade. And we have a number of job fairs that we participated in throughout the Mid-Atlantic region. We also host our own job fair that is very well supported by the businesses here in the area. And also, when we go to job fairs or host our own, we connect with the tourism department, so we have a number of resources and materials with them to hopefully promote the area that we're in as well. So those are some of the things that we do for recruitment. Obviously, both recruitment and retention salary is a big part of that. So we have worked very hard with the support of our state as well as also our local funding to make sure that we are very competitive with salaries that we're able to offer our teachers and all of our staff, and to make sure that we're competitive with our neighbors and those around us as well as throughout the state. We also are looking at our largest salary increase on an average of 7% this coming year for all of our staff, and that was something that we're very proud of, to be able to offer that. And then I'm going to have Dr. Briggs talk about a state grant that he took the lead on that we're excited about for this coming year.
Can I say one thing? And that's, one of my colleagues has arrived. Mr. John Palmer is also a board member. See him here.
And while you're breaking, can I correct something I told you before? Staggering the board, it's statutory, but it's the state statute, so you would have to ask the delegates to introduce that to change it, but it's not a constitutional amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's just share real quick about the Maryland Leads Grant. It was an opportunity offered up by MSDE to target seven strategic areas, and they outlined the, the different ones. And one of those was staff support and retention. So working collaboratively with our instructional team, Dr. Reger and his previous position, we really recognized in the need and the focus, we definitely focused on staff, staff support and retention, and wrote and received funding for almost $7 million for this, with the vast majority of that funding going directly to our employees, both current and future, in the form of $2,500 bonuses throughout next school year. So there'll be three payments throughout the year, so we don't just want them returning in September, but we want them staying all year long. So they'll receive a payment of $850 at the end of September, $850 in the middle of December, and then another 800 at the end of March. And so it's our hope that on top of the 7%, this will be well-recognized. It's been a recruiting tool for those coming to Wycomica County looking for jobs, and it's also hopefully been served as retention incentive for people to return to us next year. So just one small thing, but we're very happy to, we're able to offer it to our employees, and it's for all full-time benefited employees. So the instructional assistant, who may not be making as much as the high school principal, everybody gets $2,500 across the board.
So that don't include bus contractors?
Does not include contractual employees.
Bus drivers.
One more piece regarding teacher retention. We also have a great teacher induction program that I've asked Dr. Reger to kind of provide some information on.
Afternoon, everyone. My previous job, I, one of the supervisors that I ever saw was our supervisor of the new teacher induction program, and that's a program that's run for many years and has evolved over time. It has a number of components. We have a new teacher academy that we offer to all new teachers. It's four days prior to the start of the school year and the return of, of teachers. It's an optional program. Most of our teachers, well over 80%, historically have attended this. We pay them stipend money to attend, and they get a lot of training on some of the nuts and bolts, you know, our student information system that they have to use for importing grades and so forth, and a lot of the support in terms of developing their plan for the opening of school and what their classroom can look like. Then we bring all new teachers in for two days prior to the veteran teachers coming in. That's contractual there, they are, as part of their contract, they have those two extra days. We have a breakfast with leadership, and they get time with their content area supervisors, and they get then return to their building to have time to meet their principal, assistant principal, administrative team. And the second day, they, they have time to begin working in their classroom and setting things up to make it that real welcoming, engaging place we want it to be for students on the first day. We also have five full-time new teacher mentors. Their, 100% of their job is supporting our new teachers, so they're out there in the classrooms, working with them, co-teaching, co-planning, doing non-evaluative observations where then they can provide some formative feedback to the teachers. Beyond that, we have content area coaches in just about all of our content areas, reading, math, science, social studies, language acquisition, and those coaches, while they're not purely dedicated to new teachers, do spend a, a large portion of their time providing that support that they need, because they're going to support their teachers as needed. Obviously, those new teachers are going to need a, a little bit more. And as Dr. Stoffler mentioned, we do have a strong partnership with SU. One of those just indicative, last week at our Leadership Academy, we had two faculty from SU actually surveyed our new teachers and found out what they took away from their first year, particularly in support from their building administration and their central office supervisors, and did a session for our leadership, sharing that information with them so that we can make plans to better support the new teachers in the future.
The only thing I would add, thank you, Dr. Reger. The only thing I would add is, in regards to the teacher shortage, I think we've spoke about it previously in here, it is very much real. And we, and I would say this honestly and openly, we are hiring teachers today that I would say 10 years ago, we would not have hired. The pool is so shallow. Those teachers need more and more support, and so the supports that Dr. Reger just explained are even more critical today based upon us hiring novice, non, what I would almost say, non-ready teachers. So it's that.
Or non-traditional.
Non-traditional pathways, coming in, limited student teaching experience, non-certificated, working towards their certification. So the supports are very much needed.
I appreciate your honesty.
We know that nationwide, there's a teacher shortage, and we know we're not going to recruit ourselves out of the shortage. The pool's just not there. So this retention, these efforts, and if they continue to evolve, it's going to be more and more important to provide support, retain those people, and hopefully then make the need for recruiting, hopefully drop that a bit anyway.
Well, I guess maybe things will change because we've got new leadership, but the complaints I hear from teachers that I interact with is support from the administration. So I have problems with a student, I send them to the office, and they just send them back and tell me to deal with it. And that's, you're talking about retention, you know, that, that's one of the issues, is frustration, I think, on the teacher's part of not being able to teach because of the chaos that's going on in the classroom. So I'm just telling you what I've been told.
No, I appreciate that, and I think that's very real, and I believe that sometimes it could be for a number of reasons. One, that you just mentioned, it could be just that there's a lack of communication. Maybe their, the administrator felt like the teacher needed to do more things on their end at some point that didn't, that did not happen, but that communication wasn't there, that understanding wasn't there. And I, I agree with you that those are things, we don't want a student that's been sent out of a classroom for misbehavior to just come back in with no explanation and there not be any partnership between the administration and teachers. And that's certainly not something that we would expect. I don't think that that's probably something that the vast majority of our administrators would expect either, but it's, we appreciate that feedback, and that's certainly something that we're, we're looking at and continuing to work on is that communication piece.
This might sound a little odd, but when you were talking about the new teachers, is there any financial component from an advisory standpoint communicated with them? Like, you know, you have the 403B and the 457. I always found that, you know, my wife being a teacher and these younger teachers that she might be mentoring or something, they would always, you know, because I was a business person, you know, they thought for some reason I knew about, you know, 403Bs and 457s, but, you know, they would ask me that question a lot, and my thought would always be, you know, that's, it's, you know, yeah, they're teachers, they're not financial planners. And I know the people that administer the plan, I can't forget who administered.
Lincoln Financial.
Lincoln, Lincoln. And I know they come and they, I always feel that's a little more selling them on product, not necessarily giving them just good common sense advice and, you know, encouraging them to take, I mean, that's a great, it's, it's great that they have that option, but I just feel like, once again, you know, that's, that would be helpful to younger teachers to, you know, be educated on that and the benefits of that.
So just to make you aware, all of our employees, for whatever position that they're hired for, go through a pretty extensive orientation process. So I had mentioned earlier the 7% average salary increase for all employees across the board, but we, we neglected to mention really the excellent benefit package that we have, health insurance, retirement, and the availability of 403B, 403B plans and other things like that. So that is all covered in our orientation process, and we also have that Lincoln Financial planner that comes to visit throughout the schools and central office as well to make themselves available for our employees.
Question?
Yes, sure.
So, Dr. Briggs, I so appreciate your honesty, because that's the only way we are going to ever fix a problem, is if we're honest and talk about it. So I, I really appreciate it. And what I, what I've heard from teachers who are retiring or teachers who are getting out of the profession is the professional development on social emotional learning. They don't want to do it. And I don't know if that's something that's coming down from the state and it has to stay, or if that's something you control at a local level, doing some other type of professional development module.
I can start, and then possibly Mrs. Miles.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go off topic there.
No, you're fine. What I would say is in social emotional learning, and I'm aware of, of things that are out on social media, and I've gotten the questions out in the community or at church or whatever it may be as well, that is the new term for that. The older term may be character education or the values calendar, for those of you that were in the school system a long time ago. But it is essentially, social emotional learning is taking it to that next level where not only are they talking about the values that are important for a person to have internally and to display, but also the values that are important in how they interact with others. So if, if they're, you know, taught to be respectful, then how do you act respectfully towards others as well? So I'd have to probably turn it to Mrs. Miles to get more information on that, but I do know that there, there are questions out there about what is social emotional learning?
How is that interpreted? Who interprets it this way? Who interprets it that way?
That is, that's right. And it gets back to that communication piece as well.
I think you just nailed it, in the interpretation of the terminology. There is an embedded part in much of the professional development that's delivered. I'll go back to what Mr. Holloway said, the teacher who may be frustrated because a student is sent from class and administration may return them to the class at a point in time. Part of that whole process is classroom management and student behavior management and an embedded factor in that is the development and the application of social skills, of interaction with others, of appropriate behaviors. So it may be that a component of that is embedded and someone is classifying it as SEL. I'm very interested if at any point in time you have specific information, Mrs. Ackley.
I do. I was really, yeah, I'll show you.
I would be very interested.
Because I guess that's the question too. Who's defining appropriate? And what is appropriate? Is this person that's appropriate?
We work with the NAVIANCE program and Second Step program. NAVIANCE is secondary, Second Step is elementary. Seems like it would be the opposite, but just by title. And these are very much aligned with CC, the College Career Readiness Standards across the state. So these are very, very much supported and recommended and they are under the guise, the very official arena of some say SEL, whatever terminology may be used, but it ranges from financial literacy to social awareness of self.
And I understand it could be, this person certifies that this, I mean, I get that, but if your teacher's leaving because they don't want to do it and your parent's leaving the public school system because they don't want their kids in it, kind of defeating the purpose.
Well, be interested in knowing more about that because as Dr. Stauffer said, it may very well be a communication area that we could address even further for clarification.
And I would encourage you, and recently I've done the same thing, coming in from the background that I had, I needed to learn more about it. So NAVIANCE, if you go to that, go to that website and just look up what social emotional learning is and the topics that they discuss, as well as Second Step and the topics that they discuss in that website. I think what you'll find is many of those topics are things that we would want all of our children and ourselves as adults to learn more about and understand. So specific questions, I think we can, we can certainly field those and find more information on that to get that to the council. And at the same time, it's something that I've had questions about, I know others as well, so we'll work to get more communication out there about what that is.
And I appreciate you being so open to conversation.
Sure.
Because it's the big elephant in the room, right?
Sure.
Teachers are leaving, parents don't want their kids in the public school. I mean, this, this is where we are right now.
Okay.
And so we can't ignore it.
Well, we're going to get to my entry plan in just, in just a few topics from now.
Well, thank you for acknowledging.
But I do hope that people would let me know. Been in this system for almost twenty-five years and I've not had anyone as much as I am out in the community come up to me and specifically say that I'm leaving the county because I'm being required to teach this. I do have questions about what is social emotional learning because as many things it's taken on this new title, so to speak. But character education has been around the educational system from when I was in elementary school at Beaver Run all the way through.
But you do exit interviews, right? If a teacher's leaving?
Yes.
So you do exit interviews?
We do.
I would think that through exit interviews, you would know those type of circumstances. If the teacher feels they're talking to someone who is distance enough and objective enough where it doesn't, you know, come back to.
Absolutely. Yeah, and it, it doesn't. It's a survey that they can complete and we ask them to complete that. So that's information that we do get. And again, I'm not, not seeing that or it's not been brought to my attention. Okay. CTE, Dr. Briggs, career in technical education.
So this agenda item was requested by a council person, I don't know who, or what specific questions they had, John Ken, okay. So first of all, we're very blessed to have Mr. Brian Ashby as our supervisor of CTE. He's probably, I think he's, I can say this, he is the longest-serving supervisor of CTE in the state. He's forgotten more about CTE than most people, even state leadership have ever known. So we're very blessed to have him. So I, he's on vacation or he would be here, but working with him, I created basically a one-pager cheat sheet kind of update as to where we are with CTE. So I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to highlight a couple of things. First off, that we currently have thirty, twenty-three currently approved MSDE programs. Those programs must be aligned to business and industry needs, equalling high demand, high wage, and high skill. The focus on all of those is certification and licensure. So when the students leave the program, we need them to have a certificate or a license that says, I did it, I'm ready now. I'm ready to go to Chesapeake welding or I'm ready to go to this HVAC company and work. So that's critically important for us. In regards to new developments, we are very pleased that our JROTC program is now a part of CTE. We've had a JROTC program for years, but it's kind of sat in its own silo. Now it is a, now it is a MSDE-approved CTE completer program. We have seen pretty steady, steady growth on all of our different programs, remained steady or grew. And I highlighted two programs that have shown the most recent growth and that is computer science and business education. One of the reasons for that growth is those are, those growth opportunities can happen in the home school. So if I'm a Bennett student or a Mardella student or a Y High student, I don't have to go to Parkside CTE to, to benefit from the computer science CTE program and the business program. We do have several CTE programs that are taught in, in the home school.
Dr. Briggs, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
You did a good job with your cheat sheet.
Thank you.
And I glanced through it and I may have missed it.
Okay.
In the past, we asked you a question about one of the programs and especially since Somerset and Worcester didn't have it. You know which one I'm talking about?
Plumbing.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
What's going on with that?
So there is a plumbing component, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Stauffer, there is a plumbing component in our HVAC program. And again, want to talk about, going back up top where it says high demand, high wage, and high skill. It also is high interest. We have students that are interested in computer science and business education. Unfortunately, we didn't have students who were interested in, in the plumbing and we saw those enrollment numbers continually going down.
How do we direct them to go to these programs? Because it, it's going to be a lucrative program.
Agreed. So part of that is in the recruitment efforts, just like we recruit teachers and employees, we also recruit students. And Mr. Ashby and his team and Mr. Witty, who's the assistant principal there at Parkside CTE, go into our middle schools, do intense programming and sharing of information with both seventh and eighth graders. We've increased now that we're hopefully coming out of the COVID situation, we're giving students the opportunity to go and visit CTE and see it firsthand and talk to current students. So we're hopeful that through that, it'll, it'll benefit. Now, we'll be honest, again, hopefully it's appreciated.
I do appreciate it.
There, there, people, unfortunate, some students just don't want to do work. Plumbing is not an easy job. And that we, unfortunately, we live in a society where people don't want to work and are looking for an easy way out.
And I've always been a big fan and a big supporter of the CTE program. I'm trying to think what it was called when I was in high school, VOTEC. But it is so important and I'm seeing more and more on social media where people are saying, we need to start focusing on these type of programs instead of trying to push everybody to college. And I'm, I would love to see everybody go to college.
And we're definitely heading in that direction. Sorry to cut you off, Joe. And skipping down the blueprint just real quick, students, in the blueprint, it clearly says that students should achieve college and career readiness by the end of tenth grade and then go into these pathways, one of which includes CTE. So if at the end of, and these pathways are still being developed, however, if at the end of tenth grade, it doesn't look like that student is on a pathway towards high academic achievement with a potential four-year college in their future, a good career pathway might be through the CTE program. So that hopefully, again, they're leaving us ready to be successful in the community with a license, with a certificate, ready to work.
But it's not really a good idea to make it sound like it's a dumping ground.
No, not at all.
Because not everybody wants to go to college. Not everybody is college material.
That's correct.
And about the plumbing, it's interesting, the three plumbing companies I know of, it's generational. It's, you know, father owns a company, son goes into it, you know, and that's, it's kind of the way that, that works. So sometimes that helps, you know? I don't know with the future of that a whole, but.
One thing to add to that is, we are one of the only school systems in the state that has what we call ATEX, which is Advanced Tech Exploratory. So students as early as ninth grade can come in and do a full semester of four different programs out of the twenty-plus that we offer. And they will get an experience of about twenty-three school days in each program to spend time with that instructor, learning that field. And then they'll rotate to the next one. And from there, the one that interests them the most, they can then choose and that's what they'll go in and study for the next two and a half years. It's something that, that I'm aware of is offered hard, if, if any, hardly at all around the state. And what Dr. Briggs said is right because I was at Parkside as the principal at the time and we had to make a hard decision because enrollment, despite our efforts over many years to increase that enrollment, we were just not able to do that. So at the time, HVAC was a high-interest program. It was something that our instructor was able to do. And in fact, he would many times almost switch classes and times or students because some of the components were so similar. So it was very natural for him to bring in that plumbing component where it still is today as those students go through there. So they are learning some of those skills.
Yeah, we keep talking about plumbing, but this is just ironic. It was in the Wall Street Journal not too long ago, but they did an article on, the title of it was plumber versus physician, like who earns the most money?
Plumber.
Well, right away, everybody's like, the physician. And they did a state, they took over their, their working career at the end, who had earned the most money? And they took the average wages that a plumber earns and they took the average, average wages of a general practitioner physician. But the problem with the, you know, the physician, you know, you're thirty-two years old or so before they're actually starting to earn income, their average debt was two-hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in school where the plumber started earning his income at eighteen, nineteen years of age. So he had his longer earning period. And in the end, you know, the plumber actually earned, their income would have been more than the general practitioner. You know, but the whole article was just, you know, talking about how in education, we need to focus on the trades was, you know, was the spin of the whole thing. They use that as an example, but you know, the trades are, you know, a good earning potential for, for students, you know?
The last thing I'll point out in regards to CTE is the changes that are coming because of the blueprint. As with all of our other programs, we, whether it's mathematics or whatever, we report up to MSDE and the guidance is coming from MSDE. CTE is now, will no longer be under MSDE's guidance. So that now will be governed, it'll be a unit within the Governor's Workforce Development Board and will operate under the oversight of the AIB. So this will now not taken out, CTE is being taken out of MSDE and going to be under the oversight of the Governor's Workforce Development Board, which will be oversaw by the AIB. I think the term bureaucracy was used earlier. I see more levels of that coming into play. So we're just.
So is that a good thing or a bad thing? Because I know you give me the honest answer.
To be determined. I do have some apprehension, but we'll keep you posted. Please.
What is the youngest age that you take students over to CTE so they can see what goes on over there?
Normally, we don't start until like seventh, seventh or eighth grade, although I do know we have worked with some of our fifth grade elementary school students in the past where maybe the student's just not interested in school, potential dropout at some point because their lack of engagement. And, you know, they say, well, I'm not, I don't ever, I'm never going to do anything or I'm not going to do this or I'm just going to be a basketball player. And working with guidance counselors and teachers and administrators, we've done some smaller, some younger age trips of fifth grade students.
And see, that goes back to my thoughts. We're not glamorizing CTE, we're turning it into a dumping ground or it kind of sounds that way of high school dropout.
I would say, no, not at all. It is a, for a student who doesn't see the benefits of staying in school, all of the, you know, we have close to two thousand students in our CTE programs, close to two thousand. None of those were dumped there, none of them. And of the two thousand, probably over, over fifty percent of them are actually going to a two or four-year college as well. So that's not it at all. It's trying to find a way to engage students in their education experience. And if a student is not engaging, they don't want to be in, Mr. Briggs' algebra class at Y High and they don't see the benefits of it, we got to find another way of engaging. So it's just exploring any, any and all options, any, whether it's JROTC, whether it's CTE, whether it's an apprenticeship model where we just go straight to workforce and you actually learn on the job. That's an area that I know Dr. Stauffer and I have talked about, an opportunity of growth for us in partnership with some businesses in the community where bypassing CTE altogether and just going to work and learning on the job firsthand, that's another option as well.
Dr. Briggs, can I jump in?
Please.
Sorry, I want to go back to my secondary director role and all that's happened in CTE from that point and where we are now. We have some very highly competitive programs at CTE. It is, student has to really work hard to be able to be in the program. And, and they know that. And they know they start early and they know that they have multiple chances to be able to engage, so.
And I've seen some of those competitions and I want to use the terminology, computer programming, where they build the robots and not everybody can do that.
Correct. I mean, from a parent perspective, parent who three sons went through school, I mean, CTE is the greatest thing, that one of the greatest programs we have going. Public school has to be all things for everybody and we haven't always been that. Now you have an opportunity to go to CTE through CTE, can still go to college, can do both. And it's not the VOTEC. When I was in school, you went to VOTEC, that was the end. You were coming out to do a career. That's what you're talking about. It wasn't, then you weren't going to college. But these kids have an opportunity to do both. What I think we need to do, and we're doing it, Mr. Ashby does it well, but even better is educate the parents of the public school students that CTE isn't bad. Your child might go, still go to college, but CTE is a great opportunity to learn something, decide what you want to do, decide if college is for you, or both, and then you're going to graduate. We want to get our graduation rates up. That's the fastest way to do that is we got to educate the parents that CTE is not a bad word. It's a great, great opportunity. It's not for everybody, but it's certainly a good program for a lot of people. And they, as I said, you can still go to college. It's not a dead-end type thing, right?
And that's my point, Mr. Malone.
Absolutely. I, I agree.
Can the students, can the students now, can they, I don't know what the restrictions might be on paying and all that, you were talking about that. Can you actually turn the CTE program into one where they, they can get paid to work on the job? Is that what you were implying?
So many of our, many of our students, all of our students that go out and complete a CTE program, there are two different avenues. There's what we would term apprenticeships, which is the, the former term, remember how I said terms change a lot? The former term was workforce development. And then the second term is internships, apprenticeships, internships. Our CTE completers that go through a three-year program for our CTE completers, they do internships and many of them are paid. They're going out on the job or JT, on the job training in their senior year and learning that trade each and every day. And it's in communication with our CTE staff that are going out and supervising them and checking in with them while they're on that job. So that's one side of it. And the second side of it is apprenticeships. Met with Dave Ryan this morning. We talked about things that are going on at the airport and the importance that our community is going to have for airplane mechanics in the future and all that. Perfect apprenticeship for our students. So that would be separate from CTE. They'll still have a completer, which is mandated by Maryland, where they're going to be an academic completer, a CTE completer, or you're going to have a completer in, in what we call apprenticeship, where they're actually going out to a job and they're getting paid and getting high school credit at the same time.
There's a, I want to call it a meme that's floating around social media and one of the delegates posted it and I saw it a couple of weeks ago. It says, normalize sending kids to trade schools after high school without making them feel less like they're less than a four-year university kid.
Absolutely.
I have to shout out Mr. Ashby and the Parkside CTE again. Many of them, they've started a signing day, like the traditional, what we think of signing day is, you know, student is going to go play football at the University of Maryland or they're getting a full ride in this. CTE actually does a signing day for careers that, you know, they, they just got a full-time job at Chesapeake Shipbuilding because of their welding certification and they actually have a signing day where the employer comes in. And so that's a way of doing exactly what that is. It's glamorizing or highlighting that, and that's a great example.
And please know that I think every And please know that I think everyone on this side of the table as well, we all want the same thing. We all want the same thing. We notice our high school graduation rate's about 83%. If our students go into a CTE program and complete that program, our high school graduation rate for those students is over 97%. So we know the value of CTE. We want the same things, and we're planning on taking a look at how, we've been expanding that for many years under, as Dr. Briggs said, under the great leadership of Mr. Ashby. We want to continue to do that. We run out of space, we'll need more buildings, and finding to be able to do that, and this is on top of being able to push additional programs into our other high schools. So many of our CTE programs are at Bennett, Maradona, and Y High as well, computer science and business education. We're trying to be creative in how we do that.
Lots of media. That's all from me, Dr. Stoffer.
Thank you, sir. The next thing is that roles have changed a little bit. And a while back, I was appointed the Wycomico County Blueprint Coordinator.
Right.
And since I've been appointed the Superintendent of Schools, that role may need to change a little bit because that's going to be a very important piece to our education system as we move forward over the next 10 years, the length of the legislation for blueprint. So I am advocating and have talked with Dr. Briggs about assuming that role, and he's been very gracious and interested in doing that, or at least he has been on the surface. And I...
More twisted than both.
My plan is to be able to take that recommendation to the Board of Education in our August meeting, and since it requires a joint approval, I would like to bring that to the County Council in the second meeting of August.
Have you discussed this with the county executive?
He is, he is aware, yes. Yes.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a very big, it's a very big role it's going to play in our county government, and so I think, Dr. Briggs, you would be excellent for it, and I would, I think it'd be great.
The AIB started meeting one minute and 15 seconds ago. So like, that'll be what I'll be doing for about five hours this afternoon when I get back.
Do we have, do we have someone, because I was looking on the, the AIB, I guess, the board, for people who are appointed in the work groups, and there's someone from Talbot on there. There's no one from Dorchester or Wycomico in any of the groups.
Yeah, I noticed that.
No, but we, we will have members of the expert review teams from our county, quite a few members from our county that'll be on the expert review teams, which will receive training from the AIB, and they'll also be going around doing the reviews of other school systems and making sure that that legislation is being implemented, which will vastly benefit us from their knowledge and experience in doing that.
Because AIB.
Accountability and Implementation Board. It's a new Department of Maryland Government, and it now is the authority for local school systems regarding blueprint legislation. So there's the Maryland State Department of Education, which is generally the umbrella that we've always operated under, but now we'll be operating under actually three umbrellas. One's MSD, one is the AIB, and then one is the Workforce Development Department for the state of Maryland, because they'll be working with, directly with our CTE program.
So then where does the school board, the elected school board fall in there?
MSD, the State Board of Education. Any other questions on CTE? All right. Or Blueprint Coordinator, thank you. School safety update, Mrs. Miles.
All right. Thank you for just a few minutes. I wanted to follow up from a recent council meeting wherein George Tunis and Mrs. Tunis were here from Hardware, and they announced their very generous donation that will support safety in all of our buildings as well as in other counties in our area. I'm going to focus on us, and we submitted, had a meeting with them at the hardware location, it's quite impressive, and then submitted just recently our numbers of shields being requested. If you remember, they're basing this on the number of fire extinguishers in each school because the arrangement will be such that the extinguisher and the shield will be located in the same area for access. And our submission is just over 550 shields. So this is definitely a very generous donation. More information will be forthcoming. They are providing all of the hardware that's needed, and we will begin that installation as soon as it is available. There will be training for our SROs and the use of the shield, as well as an introduction and appropriate training for our school administrative teams and others, so that they know what is in their building, what is the purpose, and how is it used. Just mentioned SROs, just wanted to give one other quick update to say that our work with Wycomico County Sheriff and our SRO program continues. We are very much looking forward to having our SROs on our teams again this year. They're actually on our teams right now because many of them are working in our summer programs. So we appreciate the support that you provide in that, and I wanted to let you know that it's going in good directions and the work is continuing. So just wanted to give you the...
Can I ask you a question on, you mentioned your fire extinguishers and the shields. How many AEDs do you have in the buildings? They're typically mounted on the wall as well.
I would have to get you the exact number, but I know that we are just above the compliant number. There's a certain number required per number of persons in a building in the space. I know you know all of that from background, but we have those and then some in our buildings.
So you have one in most of the schools?
Oh, more than one in most schools.
That's good.
Yes, absolutely, sir. And in areas such as in our shipyard at James M. Bennett, in our stadium at Wycomico High School, in our auditorium at James M. Bennett as well, so very much. And I wish I could say that they've never had to be used, but fortunately, they are there for those few occasions when they have been and have literally been tools of life-saving.
That's good news.
A few weeks ago, we gave, moved some money around to get the extra, was it a million dollars for state school safety, hardening of the schools? Is there a plan for that?
At this point, and I'm, I'm going to ask for clarification or verification from Dr. Stoffer, but my understanding, Mr. Holloway, at this point is that we are still awaiting the guidance from MSD in terms of how that funding will be managed in terms of an accounting manner. Is that correct, Dr. Stoffer?
That's correct. So when we, when we originally asked, and you know that the maintenance of effort, that number changed and was reduced, and we originally came to the county, we were the first county in Maryland to make that request to MSD to extend the timeline for one-time funding. Our timeline, that, that timeline was normally ending at the end of March. We weren't notified of the change in maintenance of effort until a month after that. So we made the argument that we didn't know, and that wasn't, that wasn't fair. They, I've obviously understood and agreed that we would be able to extend that deadline. Since then, 11 other counties have come to the realization that they too are in the same predicament as us, and MSD withdrew that and said they would have to talk further with council, and then they would come up with a process. So we're confident that they'll still be able to provide that process for us to move forward, but we're waiting to hear back on what that process exactly will be. Now, as far as the one-time funding goes and the items that specifically that we're looking at, we do have a plan for what that money would go towards to update and to provide additional safety and security in our buildings.
But that, that money that we, we designated doesn't have anything to do with the maintenance of effort, because we kept that in our contingency, didn't we, till we release it? So that didn't have anything to do with raising the maintenance of effort, right?
No, that, that will not raise the maintenance of effort. That won't, will not raise the maintenance of effort. It's, MSD has to approve the request, even though you're in agreement and we're requesting it, MSD has to approve the one-time funding to be, to be able to move forward.
All right. Just classify it as a one-time only. Right, okay.
Right. As far, Mr. Holloway, just for a little bit more oomph to that, we're, we're ready to go once that approval comes through. Dr. Stoffer referenced already having a plan for the items for purchase. That is, that listing of items to purchase is part of an active safety plan as we are continuously assessing the safety needs and the safety areas within all of our campuses and all of our buildings, and not only taking inventory of what we have, but also planning for how we can continue to further enhance and support the safety mechanisms in our buildings. So it's part of a continuous plan.
Okay. Sounds to me like it's cash in a suitcase.
Sounds good. Sounds good. We like that.
We see, we mentioned the shields piece, just acknowledging, you know, when I think of shields, I think of, you know, a Roman warrior going into battle with their shields and their, you know, their, but the fact that, you know, it just seems absurd that we have this continued conversation, so I think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, students shouldn't be having to have shields in our schools. And that's obviously nothing that any of us around this table and room can particularly do, but the fact that that's even happening is absurd. But I am glad that you're working, or continue to work on the building, hardening those kind of pieces that they're actually trying to think through the safety, so thank you for that.
I hope this million dollars that Joe was talking about, we can make that happen for the higher-ups at MSD, can get it together because of, that, from what you have planned, it'll go a long way from what I understand.
And you speak of hardening, there's a lot of softening going on as well, teaching the people in the buildings how to respond, how to be vigilant, how to be aware of their surroundings, obviously age-appropriate and age inappropriate. So we have a very holistic approach to doing all that is humanly possible to ensure safe environments in all of our schools, because without that, all these other things can't happen.
It's adding on to that, thinking through that, I was, the one thing I think we learned from the Uvalde situation is obviously even the folks who, who were trained, as trained as trained could get and ready to go, clearly dropped the ball and really, you know. So the more that we can have folks like that trained, the better.
All right. Last item on the agenda, Superintendent Entry Plan. So as I entered into the superintendent position, there was an entry plan that was created to follow that, and it has been posted on the Board of Ed website and sent out through social media and others. And I would encourage just the council and others to take a look at that entry plan. It's, it's separated into different areas of the plan. First is a welcome and, and just introduction of myself and the things that, the background that I have and where I come from. The second thing in the entry plan is talking about principal leadership and the fact that we're all leaders. Everyone in this room is a leader. We all have influence on others, and everyone in our organization is a leader in some way, from a bus driver to a food service worker, to a teacher, to an instructional assistant. They all have influence over others throughout the day and how important it is to do that in a way that portrays the values that we know are important for our students each and every day. So that, that comes first. And then the second part, or the third part of that would be a community engagement phase, where the first, I'm, I'm spending the first four months this summer and early fall going around, talking to as many organizations as well as community members that would include students, parents, teachers, leaders within our system, and leaders within our community as well as business leaders. And some of you have already seen me in various locations doing that, and I probably should leave well enough alone, Mrs. Ackley, but I have to go back to that piece that we first started talking about with social and emotional learning. So far, what I'm hearing from community members, and I will continue to engage them and ask them questions, is that we need more types of character education in our, in our, in our schools, teaching our students about self-awareness, teaching them about self-worth, dignity, respect, and those kinds of things, and the importance of that, and what they're seeing out in the community, what they hear about in our schools, and how important it is for our students to understand what's expected of them and what values that we want our students to be able to portray each and every day. So those are the kinds of things I'm hearing and moving forward, but those are the questions that I'm asking so that you're aware as well. And then the final phase is just the strategic planning phase. As Dr. Briggs is coming on board with the Blueprint Coordinator, we know that strategic planning is going to be crucial as we move forward. We have to develop a county implementation plan for blueprint that gets submitted to MSD and the AIB in March of '23. So that plan first must be approved by our Board of Education prior to that, and we have to develop that as we move forward in the late fall and early winter of this coming school year. So my hope is that that community engagement phase that we'll be engaging in between now and the time that we start that plan will help to inform and guide our work as we move forward. So just wanted to update the council on that and where we are and how we're moving forward.
I want to congratulate you again on your appointment. Have you considered, after the first of the year, possibly taking the new council and the new board and vans and taking them around to the different schools, different buildings, and expose them to the school system so they can get an understanding of what y'all do?
Sure. I think that's something that we can talk about, what that would look like, and, and if that's an interest from the council. I know that there are a number of you that are in our schools from time to time for various events. We'll certainly have at least some new board members as we move forward, so I think that engagement piece will be important as well.
Ribbon cutting for Beaver Run.
Ribbon cutting, so where we are, as you know, you probably drive by there every once in a while, there's a very small portion of the building that's left at this point in time. There'll be significant site work that's done in that area of where the old building was so that we can get our buses and our car riders in on the first day of school. Our administration is already in the new school, and of course, our teachers and students will be in there shortly. Once that site work is completed, and it's significant, like I said, we're creating a bus loop, a car rider drop-off, parking, grading, and all of those things out front, we will be planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony once we get to that point.
Later in the fall.
It'll, it'll be probably, I'd say sometime around Christmas or just a little after, once we get that completed.
I appreciate you initially sending out an invitation to everyone to meet with you personally. It's very beneficial for me to be able to express my concerns and my interests as well as to learn what your focus is, so I thought it was very beneficial. So any council members, if you haven't had the opportunity yet to, to take Dr. Stoffer up on it, you should do it. It's a nice one-on-one. I'd also suggest too that one of the most, I think, beneficial visits that I ever made to the schools was when we went to the pre-K programs and got to see hand, hands-on, I mean literally hands-on, exactly what they're experiencing. It really was very important. I would recommend it to council members too, to try to take up on that, but I would like to do that. I wouldn't mind another, to go out there again, however you may want to coordinate that, because I think that's very important to see how that plays out.
Absolutely. Thank you for your interest.
Sure. Any other questions? Any other? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good. Motion adjourned. Second.